It is August 28, 2024. It's 4:00 PM. I'm calling the regular meeting of the Wood Creek City Council to order at this time. You'll ride for a moment of silence and then you stand in the private space. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the honor presented to you by the flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one nation indivisible. If the city clerk would call the roll please.
Mayor General Francisco. Mayor Fortun Dela Hines there. Councilmember Chris Drummond.
Here.
Councilmember Renee Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamburg.
Here.
Councilmember Kristi Richardson.
Here.
We have a four.
Thank you. Are there public comments? We will begin with the particular. I as well as Marguerite will give our three minutes to Aurora. All right, Aurora LaFrenz. Nine minutes. Okay, you want to do that on number five?
I will never, I will never use nine minutes.
Okay.
Speaking of the IRS. If that's okay.
Okay, but you want us to figure that out. Okay, that's perfect. Right. And Gloria, you want to?
I'm yielding my time to Aurora as well. I agree with her comments.
All right. And Ms. Blonk?
Yes.
Did you want to speak now or to a specific item?
Now's good. I don't think there's anything exactly on here, but.
Okay. You can, your.
All right. My concern is for the traffic and the children in this community. I live on Champion Circle further down and I, so I'm up and down this road. I can't say how many times a day. And there are children out there playing. They're riding their bikes. They're riding their little scooters. They're being kids that they should be. And they go outside the rest, peak cars and dart back and forth. And if you don't live in this community or specifically maybe even on this street and are aware of them, there's a lot of traffic. And since the roads have been paved, thank you, I feel like there's even more traffic that comes past Champion Circle and goes down and across. And I'm just concerned. That's it. I, I hope there are measures in place going forward for traffic calming in this community. I mean, we're a community. We're not 45 east or west. We're neighbors and you know, I think we have to look out for each other. Can I get the same as that? We have a safety enhancement package.
Excuse me, are you finished with your comments? But to make it clear, we can't just have a discussion about the public comments, but we can make a statement and that of that.
Okay.
Or we can say that we will put that on a future agenda. So if you'd like to.
Were you done? You took a pause or it sounded like you were.
No, I'm fine. I said what I needed.
Okay. We have a safety enhancement package that just went to bed. It includes radar signs at entrances to help signify the speed limit and alert people to what speed they're driving. It includes speed cushions, a set of five so far in primary areas targeted. There's a couple of other signs and things being addressed in it. That is a statement of things that are out to be done right now. Go ahead. Can I ask what a speed cushion is? It's much like a speed bump, but instead of one line, it's the two cushions that are safety vehicle friendly. So they're approved by the fire marshal and ambulance drivers because their chassis are wider. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. All right. So we'll say the rest of the public comments for item number five will move to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is the submission of the Hayes County Cradle District calculated fiscal year 2425 tax rate calculated chapter, the legislature's work sheet, city council.
I move that we accept and approve the Hayes County of Cradle District calculated fiscal year 2425 tax rate calculation worksheet.
Seconded by Councilmember Bailey. It's in the packet. Everybody have a chance to look at any, any questions, discussion?
Not a question. I do have, um, okay. If you've ever done a very extensive IRS 1040, that is pretty much what this thing looks like. And unless you are a certified public accountant, I don't believe you can adequately or even accurately make any comments about it. So.
Okay, no comments. Good enough for me. So we will vote by show of hands and signify by raising your hands. Am I approved? All right. All right. No opposed. So yeah. Okay, on the regular agenda, and so I'm sorry for the technology here. I'm going to try to do a chair screen on this. Presentation, I think it should work. Okay, give me half a second. Dan, you can start by introducing yourself.
Okay. So good evening, everyone. I'm Tatum Davis. I am an 11th grader at Wimberly High School. I've been in Girl Scouts since second grade. Do theater in one act play. One act play is our UIL contest plays. I'm trying to remember. I've been gardening since really little. I started doing garden club in Jacob's Well at second grade and went through high school and I keep our family garden at home nice and clean. We just finished redoing our front garden bag. And so I am thankful to be able to do this project with all of you.
It's behind you. Sorry.
Keep going. Sorry. I've no person to. Thank you.
So I am hoping to work on a monarch waystation in Augusta Park. I've been working with Becky and Claire. So a monarch waystation is a resting and nesting spot for monarchs on their migration south and back north for winter and spring. So they nest on certain types of milkweed and plants and they eat certain types of pollens and nectar and help pollinate all the other plants around.
Here's your presentation. She's trying to go off memory.
It's no, you're good. I remember most of it. I'm just trying to make sure.
Hold on, we can't hear anything without sound going out when we run.
One of the coolest things I learned about butterflies when I was researching this is that they cluster. So it's the two pictures on the top and the bottom. So they do it in a forest and so they cluster into big groups of butterflies and it's like thousands to millions of them. And like one butterfly doesn't weigh a lot, but like millions of butterflies on one branch weigh a lot. So the branches break and I thought that was really cool. And so if you look on the map where the butterflies are coming down, you can see that like central Texas area is like one of the major spots that the butterflies migrate through. Think that's on that one. So part of my gold award, we're working through the Parks and Rec Board and with Becky and Claire. And then we want to make sure everything is installed with proper regulations. This is supposed to be part of the beautification products, project for Augusta Park. And it will be a 10 by 10 raised bed. We actually have a picture further down so you can see that. I don't remember what side it's on. I think it's further down. We're going to do native plants, all native and hopefully most of them, if not all deer resistant, or at least somewhat deer resistant. Some of the pollinator plants will include butterfly weed, antelope corn, milkweed, lanthana, and a few other pollinator plants. And then the next slide. Then the slide. So when the waystation is registered, you'll get a certificate and an ID number and then we'll have a sign that gets put up. And then we're hoping to put some like educational signs, so like stuff that say like what the plant names are and then like maybe the life cycle of the butterfly and then how pollinator plants work and attract. And then, so the next one is one of the signs we're looking at possibly getting. It was really nice because it had a lot of different butterflies and a lot of information. And then there were two others on the next one that had like the life cycle and more information about other pollinating plants. We don't have to get all of them.
Do we have to change our name to Crane Farm?
No. That's just what was on there. And then I think the next one has like the, okay, so the sustainability. I'm planning on continuing working with Wood Creek Parks and Rec and neighborhood volunteers for the, at least the first year, just because I am a junior. So I will be graduating next year. To make sure like the structure is still sound and that the placement of the waystation and everything is good with like the plants and the sun. And that all the plants do survive through the winter and stuff. So if they need to be replaced, I can replace them. And then the placement has been decided on the amount of sunshine and proximity to the rainwater collection tank that's being put in. So yeah, and then the next one should be the map of Augusta Park. So the bee fly where it's the two little honeycomb looking pieces. Those are what the garden beds are going to look like and they're going to be more like tapered off into, so they're going to be like honeycombs that taper off into each other. And they'll be close enough to the path that everybody can get a good look at the flowers and stuff in there. And then I don't remember what's on the next one. The budget. Okay, that's what's on that one. So the wood for the border were donated. We cut them out of our backyard. And then the rebar and wire that we use is like about $30. The cardboard boxes are all recycled. A lot of them are cookie boxes. The mulch is from the city. I hate it. Weed barrier. That was donated. The soil, we're thinking, we're hoping that it's less than $500. We're getting more quotes. The $500 was just going off of price from Ace and Home Depot, just like online pricing as well as the plants.
If you consider Wimberly Gardens, they frequently donate to us for free for city projects.
She's in communication with Wimberly Garden and.
The owner's out of town.
The owner's out of town right now, but he did respond.
Yes, he's a Wood Creek resident.
Yeah. So he did respond to her email. The word is, we're in communication. We just, this was because we knew she had to have a budget for her gold award application too. So this was literally going to Ace going, okay, how much, how much is soil? Time, company back. So that's what, that's what those numbers are based on. And we of course are, she is a bargain shopper. This was like on the high side.
Plants we put $500 as well, just so we can hopefully get under that. We are going to go to the local nurseries as well and see if they can possibly donate stuff. The waystation sign comes with registration. I don't know if we put registration on there. I might have skipped over that. But I think it was $36 if I'm remembering correctly for registration. The monarch life cycle sign, we're getting quotes for that. I don't know if that person responded or not. And then plant identification signs. The budget for those was like if we had anything left. And then most of this budget is coming from Girl Scout funding. So like cookie sales and fall product sales. And then like if we have like a bake sale outside of like cookies and stuff. And I will be looking for a lot more quotes and a lot more discounts and coupons. And then the next slide has like the signs that we were looking at for the plant identification. They were stainless steel.
Stainless steel and they were etched, so it shouldn't rub off or anything.
So.
Yeah, one other too is the Native Plant Society might be forthcoming with plants or lower nominated. There's some might be. Questions for Ms. Davis?
I just have, just have one.
Yes.
And, and I, I think I already know the answer by that question. Do you think that this butterfly garden will encourage people within the city of Wood Creek and even around Wood Creek? Perhaps plant some of these kinds of plants to further encourage butterfly waystations outside of the garden actually.
I think so because a lot of like the waystations, like, so they have like a map. I didn't put it on there. But they have a map of like all the waystations and there are not a lot in Texas. The ones that are in Texas are like northern Texas, like Dallas area. But I think that's like the green space stuff that they have to have. But there's not a lot in central Texas, like at all. So I'm hoping that if we make it more known, that they'll possibly start like looking into stuff like that. So.
Very ambitious project. Go ahead.
I want to make sure everyone knows what Ted is talking about when she says her gold award. Would you?
Yeah, a gold award is the highest ranking award in Girl Scouts and it's equivalent to an Eagle Scout project. So, yeah.
Lot of time, lot of effort put into.
No, thanks for picking us.
My smaller question, just more of a comment. I'm just really excited about this project and I know just from my daughter being a Brownie and being around you guys at Cookie Season. And I know how deeply involved you guys are in the organization and I'm just really excited because I think they're a great world model to be number girls. And this is a great project and I'm just really excited for you to get my gold award. And my picture obsessed with butterfly.
So I'll see what happens when I hit this on this. Our next order of business, item number three is to discuss and take appropriate action to approve the construction of the waystation. Funds to be allocated on the green space maintenance, not to exceed $1,100 for your.
I move that we approve the construction of a monarch butterfly waystation in Augusta Park. Working with the Parks and Recreation Board as part of a Girl Scout Gold Award project by Tatum Davis. Allocating $1,100 from the green space, space maintenance budget line item.
I'm going to give the Brownie mom.
On this item, I would like to note that we have another project set to come out of those same funds. But I think the timing on this one will mean that it proceeds first. So if there's a budget amendment needed, I will bring that forward on the other project.
Green space?
Yeah.
And specifically you mean the Boy Scout?
No, sir. I'm speaking of the gardens around the gazebo at the triangle. We've approved funds to come from there, but I can easily issue a budget amendment for that project and not interfere with her.
Green space maintenance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think, I think Ms. Davis will have pretty good luck getting some of those numbers down. And, and so I don't think we're going to spend $1,100. I mean, it'd be, be nice, nice if we did and I will help anyway.
Feel much better.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands.
All right.
No votes. But it has to be unanimously. Congratulations. All right. So, so that's item number three. It was on item number four and y'all can stay or not.
No, I don't.
We have paid for practice though.
Tristan sat through the board.
He did.
So you can, you can ask him if I could tell him that.
Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you. Item number four is to discuss and take possible actions to accept Parks and Recreation Board recommendation of proposed plans and costs. Put forth the Parks and Recreation Board towards further completion of the triangle, Creekside and Augusta Parks, which number.
Yes, I move that we, that we take possible action to accept or that we actually accept the Parks and Recreation Board recommendation on the proposed plans and costs put forth by the Park and Recreation Board towards the further completion of the triangle, Creekside and Augusta Parks.
Seconded by Renee Bailey.
If I could talk to this for just a minute, we've had extensive discussions about this and gone through the entire process. And that city council has been given the information regarding what has been approved and what hasn't over time. And I think it's, it's time that we finally approve what we have and then we can, at the next city council meeting, talk about what's, I can tell you pretty much what's left, but how we plan to use that with city council approval.
Thank you. Only recently, council has been able to gain access to some of the city documents and files such as the funding agreement with Hayes County regarding the POSAC grant the city received. I've handed those out to you. This is a big packet here. Only yesterday, with the help of the mayor and Mr. Burton, were we able to find and piece together the two exhibits that should have been part of this funding agreement document together and put into the document in our city files. On the record, the officer should have had these exhibits, A and B elements as part of this one document altogether because the agreement clearly references attachments, A and B, but they were not there. I have printed this out now, which is a complete document for council. You will see before you in the panel. Mr. Burton, could you grab one more for me? He handed his away. Thank you.
Okay, pass me online.
Oh, I got the reference again.
After Jeff.
Okay. There we go. I'd like to give a little background and perspective on the POSAC fund being discussed here with this item. In 2020, Hayes County placed proposition A, commonly referred to as the Hayes County 2020 Parks and Open Space Fund on the ballot. The voters of the county approved this $75 million bond. This bond is paid for by the taxpayers of Hayes County. In April of 2021, the Hayes County Court approved the 2021 POSAC Charter establishing POSAC Advisory Commission for the Court. Wood Creek submitted a plan asking for $202,500 with a $67,500 match totaling $20,700. The plan that Wood Creek submitted was approved, but was only granted $2,200,000 with a $67,500 match. The funding agreement between Hayes County Commissioners Court and Wood Creek is what I have placed in front of you. These are the terms of Wood Creek receiving POSAC funds. To sum up this agreement, POSAC funds, including the city's matching funds, in quotes, shall be used and only used for the products, unquote. The projects are the original plans the city submitted in order to receive the grant, which are now included with the funding agreements seen before you. You'll see those exhibit lead on this document. Another quote from this funding agreement, the fund will be used exclusively for the projects. Any and all park improvements the city has made outside of the original plans submitted to the county are the responsibility of the city and cannot come out of the POSAC grant funds. That is what this funding agreement says. But there is a glimmer of hope to correct the situation we find ourselves in. On page four of this funding agreement, it states, "No amendment, modification, or alterations of the terms hereof shall be writing unless same shall be in writing and dated subsequent to the date hereof and duly executed by the parties here too." In my best layman's terms, the city does not have the right to make any changes to what was originally approved by the county unless the changes are approved by the county. To date, that has not happened yet, but I'm with them. Why is this a problem? Because based on this funding agreement the city has entered into, changes cannot be funded by using POSAC grant money, so they would have to come out of the city coffers. Today, council has not been given a clear representation of what has been changed from the original plans the county approved. The city needs to send these changes to the county to have them reapprived, reapprived hopefully by the county. So that the, so that we can actually spend the POSAC funds on these changes. But let's be clear, the city has no right to assume the county will approve these changes to their, to their approved plans. No one in Wood Creek has the authority to obligate or bind the county to approve these changes simply because they were already in. Why is this important to me? Well, in part, it has to do with protecting the right of transparency to the taxpayers. Not just to the taxpayers in Wood Creek, but also the taxpayers in Hayes County who are plugged into this branch. When the original plans were approved by Hayes County Commissioners Court, the process is similar to what we, we're required to do at our local law. They placed Wood Creek's proposal on their agenda and any and all citizens were given the required notice that they would may take action to approve Wood Creek's proposal. And anyone in the public had the right to voice their support or reject of what was being proposed. To date, the county commissioners court and the taxpayers of our county have not been given the same due process or even know about the changes that were made to what was approved by the county. All they currently know is what was submitted to the county originally and that the county approved. Imagine if I was to remodel my home and different contractors proposed plans for that remodel. And I entered into agreement with one of them and together we agreed the cost of the remodel project was going to cost $2,667,500. And we agreed to specific plans on what it was going to cover. Now imagine that the contractor changed the marble box right to the kitchen to simply four inch wide tile. Rather than installing a soaking tub I wanted, they installed a shower. Rather than a two car garage on the right side of the house, they built a one car garage on the left side of the house. And now there's a tool shed in the backyard that I have, wasn't even part of the original plans. And when I asked the contractor why these changes were made, why wasn't I consulted before the work began, they simply said, these things were cheaper, and besides, I needed money for this tool shed that I liked. In this scenario, I am Hayes County Commissioners Court, and the contractor is Wood Creek, and the people being used are the Hayes County taxpayers. Due to our previous city manager not keeping council informed regarding the changes of these park improvements as they relate to the spending of POSAC grant, and the fact that the previous city manager did not align the spending of POSAC funds with the funding agreement that outlined the use of these funds, we are in a pickle. Um, unfortunately, there's some cleanup regarding the process of spending POSAC funds that we have not yet accomplished. For that reason, I would recommend the city immediately places a stop on any further spending of POSAC funds until the county has approved the new site plans and designs that represent the changes to the Hayes County Court originally approved plans. For this reason, I will be voting no on this item, and after this main motion has been resolved, I shall propose a new main motion on this item.
Further discussion of the main motion?
I, I would like to just speak briefly to, um, what's in here, uh, because it's great. It's a really extensive amount of information, and it's much appreciated. However, I, I will say I'm still a little bit unclear on two specific points. One being just a brief list of the exact changes. We finally have that design, site design plan in here, and that's really helpful on page forty-seven. That, that was kind of one of the biggest components that was lacking, is sort of like that visual being published in a packet. But I think what everybody would probably really appreciate is just a distillation of only the pertinent information, meaning just a list of these items removed, these items swapped in their place, and then the cost difference, if that makes sense. Because what we have in the packet is just all of it. So it can be very hard to understand what exactly are the proposed changes, if that makes sense, especially, and I love to admit it, but, um, I'm not as intimately aware with the ongoing of this project, meaning I haven't been to Augusta Park in several months. I have not watched the Parks Board meetings for the past couple of months. The last ones I watched were back in, I think, February, March, January, January period. So it is a little bit difficult for me. I would be making assumptions, I guess, in approving this plan as submitted without some, like I said, that more like distilled, distilled, kind of just finite, these are the exact changes, right? So that is my one hesitation with, uh, just kind of blindly moving forward and accepting this, because I'm, I'm really still not clear, um, on the monetary changes and differences. I didn't know if you saw her.
You're still talking.
Yeah, I, I'm.
You're done now?
Yes, sir.
Ruth Ann?
I just want to clarify a couple of things. I'm not sure.
Just for the record, would you identify yourself?
Ruth Ann Gilbert, Chair of the Parks Board. I don't know, because Suzanne is not here, but we have put together a very detailed list of every dollar spent by park. Where is that information, Bob?
Some, there's, I think you might be talking about page thirty-four in the packet, and see if I can actually find page thirty-four.
Here's, here's another one, too. The only, okay, there's been no change in the triangle, there's been no change at Creekside from the original submission. None. So when we got to the part about Augusta, we had to rethink what we were gonna do here, because we were at a, a budget dilemma, and we were uninformed of everything that this has gone through. So we proceeded with the assumption that we wanted to finish the farm. But where is that information that Suzanne, I mean, a detailed list of every penny that has been spent?
It's here, but it's, it's confusing, because there are still things in here that are either not installed yet. I don't know if they're purchased or where they're at. I mean, this is the same thing. This is, this still seems incomplete, to be completely frank. And then, like, for example, at Creekside Park alone, that spinning thing, the Wheel of Death, as I love to call it, uh, that was not in the, at all. And, um, so that was actually, like, the, the plans were presented, and we said, remove that, and then it, it never got removed. You know what I mean? So that was, so it, it was kind of confusing as to where even that landed.
Yeah, because see, I've, I've never heard that, because that was ordered from the same company that the bike rack was ordered from. So that was all included in that order. Kathy, they have that spreadsheet that Suzanne put up?
It's, it's on page thirty-four.
Well, it's so small, I can't believe I can even read it.
Well, I, I mean, it's very thorough. For example, it talks about the honeycomb tunnels.
Those were eliminated yet.
So it says, add honeycomb tunnels, and then honeycomb tunnels are in the final numbers, but then there's no clear indication of what's been removed from here, if that makes sense. Unless I'm just sincerely missing something.
That's true, and, and those were five thousand dollars, and we chose not to do that. But all the other parks are almost exactly, other than, which I didn't realize the.
Suzanne, it wasn't in the original plan, that, that spinning wheel thing, it's missing in the original plan. And I, I mean.
I can see.
Anyway.
Your time will.
No, I understand what you're saying, but the money has been spent. I think we're down to three thousand dollars left.
Or like on the construction fence, it, there's nothing there for actuals. It doesn't show that it was removed, and that's on Creekside. So I'm just, what I'm pointing out is there were so many errors in this, or just.
The side fence, there is a fence there.
It says, construction fence rental. There are no actuals there.
I don't even know what that is.
I know, so that's what I'm saying, Ruth Ann. The guy was like, this list, while it is very detailed, lacks, uh, the, the finality of, you know, just being complete and, 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 um, or updated again, because it looks like it's, uh, so out of, out of date.
No, it's not. She did it this week.
Like the, the bike racks, no money attached to them at all, and they're.
The bike racks, because.
They're still included in your final package on this.
Well, this, this is one page. There are a lot of other, there's a lot of other documentation in this packet.
Yes, and all of that's from the original grant. That's what I was, no, well, it's labeled. Presentation, March twenty.
Hold on, Chris.
I mean, we've got a real document issue here that we're trying to puzzle through, and what I'm, I'm saying is, in reviewing this packet, I did not see the things I said, which was just a real clear indication of what all was removed and what is.
And what is here.
What is your, your plan for any further spending, because you can't.
Well, we didn't add that to it, because we know y'all are, you needed to, you needed to approve what is already there.
And then what's still not here is the actual actual, because there's.
Really?
Yeah, because like you have, like I said, you have the honeycomb tunnels, which you didn't order, listed in your actuals on your final.
Bob, where is that spreadsheet?
Is it what you're talking about? I found it on the screen at the moment. Well, I don't know about.
So was there a page left off of it, maybe? Is there like a backside that never came?
Yeah, just, I don't know. Yeah, this page thirty-four that we've been referencing, um, you know, is, I don't think it's the latest. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a really good document, and it does show what was in the original layout. It says decisions that were made and then, and then remaining. It just, it's, it just hasn't been updated. You know, it's like, like it says, the benches have been removed here, um, but the, the bike racks are, so it's like, there's, there's some, um, there's some question marks that if, if this sheet were updated with, with actual numbers now, it would be very helpful for us to be able to take it to the county and say, okay, this is what we did, this is what, what happened. I mean, we did have, we did have confirmation from the county attorney at the time that as long as it was sort of within the scope of what we're doing, it's probably okay, but it was, we don't have that in writing that I know of. Um, so, so.
So it says right here, we've spent two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
So, good question, May.
I know, just, just, just finish this. This is what has been spent.
Situation by referring to the wrong, originally approved.
Her document has a whole extra page.
Well, this is additional wish list items. We did not include that, because what I thought we all wanted to see was what has been spent so far.
Certainly.
This is from Suzanne.
Yeah, I, I am wondering. No, okay, I, we're, this is not in the packet at all.
See, that's what you should be looking at. I'm not sure what this is, but, uh, this may be Pat's original presentation.
Yes.
So the difference between the original presentation and what has been installed is in that part there.
So I need, I kind of need to help jump in right now.
Sure.
So I handed you the original presentation to the county. It is not what's in this table. It is not what is being referenced. What was originally sent was this document.
Yeah. Well, Chris.
I'm, I'm telling you, that's.
It's the same amount of money.
That's not our decision to make. This is what they approved.
So I'm, I'm saying that I'm, I'm going to meet with the county myself, and I'm gonna take this with, with me. I'm going to zip them and say, okay, this is, that, okay, so, so I'm pretty sure it's a fact that the county is gonna say, that's fine, you, you choose a different playground configuration than what was in the proposal. I think it's going to be fine. I don't want to beat this thing to death.
I agree.
Because there's a deadline. There's a deadline on the submission, and then we may have decided, yeah, with the same dollar figures.
Well, what it comes in, and there is, there is a, I think what you were talking about is that, you know, the two hundred and sixty-one thousand spent is on, um, what's that, page thirty-three, page thirty-three of the packet, you know, with.
There it is.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, city attorney? Zach? I'll just pay this payment. City attorney Zach, I wanted to make sure that you had this document that Wes sent to you, and I would like your analysis of the agreement that was being entered into regarding the POSAC funds, and give us a report. But this conversation alone, I'd like to, oh, no, we have a little stuff this.
Before we're done, I have at least one comment to make as well. That is, on, um, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, City Council took a vote on, uh, possible action regarding development and acquisition, and basically, uh, approval of what was presented by Pat Rollins. And that, uh, City Council vote was five to nothing, that we go forward with what they already had, so nearly everything that was, that is here was already approved.
No, not by the counties.
Well.
No, no, by the city council, yes.
Pause, pause real fast. The county approved these plans. Council made changes based on the understanding if we were still installing similar type items, it would likely be approved. Additional changes have been made since that vote alone that have never come before council for approval until today. And there is not a clear indicator of what those changes are specifically, right? And the cost difference, and the materials in the packet today, I don't know who compiled them, but they are incomplete and insufficient, meaning they have bad information in them. They are lacking numbers, as we've just already said. Bike racks were not ordered and installed, but they're indicated on here. Honeycomb tunnels were not ordered and installed, but they're indicated on here. And this list alone, if you compare with what was approved, has lots of additional add-ons. Diatomaceous earth, benches, um, uh, picnic tables, um, signs, I mean, all kinds of things that were net, ceiling fans, all, all kinds of stuff that was never even come before council for approvals either. So beyond being in violation with our agreement with the county, we're in violation with our agreement with the citizens, because the last plans they saw on a packet, digital, are not what happened in their parks, nor do we have a clear representation of what happened with the money. And I am not intending to be attacking on this point or, uh, making people feel like they've done wrong. My goal here is to identify the solution, which is a clear list of things that were not in the POSAC plan, a clear list of what did not happen from the council approved alteration. And we don't, we don't have that today, and we also don't have final numbers anywhere for anyone's disposal. And if this was a handout that should have been included, it is somewhat helpful. It had a lot of the items. I think, you know, this is a great starting point, and simply even highlighting things in this list would be very helpful, because you know, y'all are, y'all are the closest to it, and we need that assistance to make an educated decision. Or more importantly, we need it published for taxpayers, so that they can understand what changes were made.
Sure.
That's it.
Kind of like I mentioned on that, on that page thirty-four, and I, I, I'll personally help you with this, because I, I need to understand it better if I'm gonna go to the county and present it.
Sure.
Um, but, you know, just that page thirty-four, if it were, uh, you don't have it, but you, it's in the packet. I mean.
Yes, I'll get it from you, yeah.
But on that page thirty-four, if you take that list and just update it, and just get it accurate, and just say, okay, these are the things that are, that are in the packet. This is, and it's all in here. This, these are the things that we told the county we wanted to do. Okay, so that's, that's column A. You know, column B is, okay, we made some adjustments due to budget. I mean, if, as I told, uh, Commissioner Shell, and we were doing this, you know, during COVID times, and we're having supply, supply chain issues, trying to get stuff, and then, but we're trying to, to get this thing done. So, so there were some decisions made that, well, we can save some money here and put it over here and be able to meet article over here. You know, so, so we've got, we have two things going on.
Sure.
You know, one is that the council wasn't kept up to date, and that's not your fault.
We understand that.
The council was not kept up to date, so we, we didn't get the chance to look at this and say, oh, that's a great idea. Or, you know, that might be a good idea, and Augusta Park is the Creekside, or whatever, you know, so, so there, that, that's water under the bridge. We can't change that. But we can get good factual information that says that, well, you know, we first thought there were gonna be bike racks over here. We decided that, you know, we didn't want to encourage bike riding, you know, to that particular place, but it might be a little dangerous, so I said, whatever. You know, so with, with an notation, so that budget line item, you know, you know, we now have, you know, in reserve, and the decision that we made at Parks Board was to put that money to, um, you know, a, a butterfly weigh station or whatever, right? So, so if we, if we can take those columns and say, these are the changes that were made.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and then go to the county and say, is there any issue? Here's the, here's the document that, that we signed, you know, we admit that, that we, we took liberty with some of the decisions, which should have gone to you with these changes months ago. Um, and give me a chance to, to, you know, take it upward with court and, and make a decision, you know. We're sorry, we're a small town, it's, it's, to, to POSAC, it's a small grant. Um, we did get, we're permanent county attorney at the time, that we could make adjustments, but what didn't happen is getting that information back. So we're trying to make up for that.
That's fine.
And then, and then from that, you know, we can, we can easily come back to council and then say, okay, county says. all this is good, this may be not good. And so then we can make the decisions and say, okay, well, county is not going to pay for this. You know, we're going to, I mean, it's already done. It's, it's money spent. So we're going to have to do a budget amendment or something to take care of it. But, but we, we just need some counting in, in my opinion, before we can make firm decisions on any of this.
I just wanted to say, like, what would make it very clear is if you just, like, focus on the changes. So with this information, everything being here, it's really hard to correlate. And then I would argue that price changes don't even count. Meaning if the playground we had in the packet was 158,000 and we installed one that's 163,000, I'm not clear that that's the changes we're focusing on. I think it's site plan changes and then substitution of items in that. Does that make sense? That's the actual plan change.
Sure.
We all knew going into POS Act that cost changes from when it was submitted to what was almost two years later before it was actualized meant there would be price changes, right?
Yes.
So it's not the cost of the playground.
Exactly.
It's like, yeah, the stuff now.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, once we have that.
Identify those.
Yeah, and I, and I'm more than happy to help too and, and I'm, you know, with document generation or whatever, because I don't know, we know when Ms. McKenzie will be working again, so we might be shorthanded on the front. But, you know, we're one, we're one step away from the mic.
Yes. Thanks all. Yes.
It, it's out there. It is. It's out there. Now, people are loving it. You know, so that's not going away, one way or another, that ain't going away. But, but instead of saying, okay, well, you know, we've got, you know, six thousand left to spend, let's put the brakes on.
And that's what we've done.
Yeah, and just, and this, this is, this is the worst. Once we get all this settled out, this is the wish list and we'd like to do, to just complete things. And then, and then off we go. Also, also if it's something that, you know, was not in the, in the original plans and somebody said, it would be a brilliant idea to have this included, then bring it to council and say, and we'll fund it instead of a POS Act. We'll fund it out of our parks money, because you have, you have money, you have money in your budget right now and you've got a month to spend it.
How much? Yes.
Your original budget was $10,000. And because you made a request, it was basically a spectacular and some other stuff. And then we felt at the time that, you know, like POS Act, you know, could need a little, a little help. So I think it was pure amendment.
There's always those things you forget, you know, or if something gets installed and it's installed badly and you got to come back. So we were trying to back you on that.
And y'all have. So I know, this is very easy to fix. Yeah, we'll fix them.
Can we get away from conversation?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
If we can take it offline there.
Just a little tiny.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
We're trying to get this done. I mean, what, what is it that, that is going to add to this?
Well, may I, may I ask one question because I agree with everything you can say. And I think it's a great way to go forward. But what I wanted to ask is, I'm just curious, I have no knowledge. Has the county generated any particular inquiries or interest in how we're spending this money? Or are we?
I'll take this document.
I mean, we're bound by the document.
Well, I understand that I found my documents. I'm asking, you're going to go talk to the county, you said. But I wondered if there's some process in place right now where they are in fact reviewing, questioning, and we're actually reading each other.
We're not.
So this is generated totally from this council at the moment.
It's generated from the fact that we had a city manager spending funds without council approval and we had site plan changes in parks without council approval. And so it alerted us to the fact that we were also out of agreement with the county and they don't report to us. So whether or not they're reviewing things.
So it's a good due diligence on the contract and keeping everyone informed.
Exactly.
And I think he's done a great job on that. I'm complaining a bit, I promise. And I just was curious if the county was on your back too.
If they are reviewing, they didn't communicate with us.
Okay, thank you so much.
One quick question. Is there a level materiality to this? Because the volunteers, they give their time for this kind of a project. But now it seems like, well, we could have done this. Is there a dollar amount after X amount of spend? Or as customer Heinz said, is there going to be a change? Are there clear criteria we can give our volunteers?
Advisory boards are never authorized to spend city money at all. Everything comes to council and report owner reports to us. And unfortunately, that happens to be at any, all, all. There, no advisory board is authorized to spend money. So they must present budgets, present budget changes. They must present plan changes. Should the plan change? All of that is required of every advisory board.
So I'll understand law. Further discussion? All right, so the motion is to accept the Parks and Recreation Board recommendation on proposed plans and costs for the Parks and Recreation Board toward further completion of Triangle, Creekside and Augusta Park. All in favor of the motion, please signify by raising a yes and a no.
Aye.
Opposed?
Two ayes.
Vote is two ayes, three nays. Motion fails.
Am I right? I move that all spending of POS Act funds towards further completion of the Triangle, Creekside and Augusta Parks be placed on hold until the county has seen and approved of the new site plans that reflect the changes made to the plans that they originally approved and that council sees and approves these new plans before sending them to the county. These plans will also include a clear breakdown of what has been spent using POS Act funds that relate to what were in the original plan sent to the county and a separate breakdown of park improvements spending that relates to those things that were not a part of the originally approved county plans.
Do you need my last?
I would, yeah.
I second, by the way, I second that.
I'm going to paraphrase that motion to all spending on POS Act funds will cease until approval. Is that, are you, is that fair?
Summary, yeah.
I, I know we'll get the, the full motion in the next.
I'd just like to speak to this. At this point in time, I don't believe this is the volunteers' responsibility anymore. And I would like to request that this task be given to someone else and not because you're not good at it, because I believe you've spent an insane amount of time on this already. And I would like to.
A lot of, a lot of that.
Let me ask this. Things that don't cost a penny, can we proceed with that? Like moving mulch, getting the flower beds done.
I think.
The mulch is only about spending POS Act funds.
That's right. And then I, I will make a second motion to make sure you're good once this is what happens. I would like to request that the person preparing the documents not be the person anymore.
I will, are you?
I will volunteer.
I mean, volunteer as well.
Are you amended this? Looks like you're going to make a motion after we've both done this one.
I, I was under the impression the volunteers were preparing all of this and learning that it was the city secretary. I'm unclear because I said give it to staff, but.
Well, the original direction council gave was for the parks. We can change that now. And I never actually directed a somebody.
I'll amend to create a subcommittee of council member Graham and Heinz to prepare the document. With your help, if you want.
Okay, so the amendment to the motion correct is to form a subcommittee of, there are different times, Tom and Robert, to complete work with that, to complete the paperwork on, on the POS Act funding as we've been discussing. All right, this going on? All right, all in favor, please signify by raising a yes and a no.
Aye.
Of those, right, four ayes, one aye.
The audio is really, like, something's wrong. It's making good ones. It's, we can either hear somebody outside of the meeting or something is still.
Oh, I think Michael maybe is trying to speak. He's unmuted. He's on his phone. Mike, can you hear us?
Yeah, I think that was just interference. I, I'm not, I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to mute you if it's okay, Mike. He has unmute power. Well, he's, he's the only one that's unmuted. And he's on the phone, but he's probably got his phone muted. Anyway, let's then go on the main motion to cease spending on POS Act funds until approval of county has amended with the supplement. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Of those. Amber.
I'd like to make a motion to allow parks board members to continue with site plan projects that do not involve expenditures and are mere stage forty-seven package for Augusta Park.
The motion is to allow park board members to continue with their site plan work on the parks as long as, as long as no funders expended from POS Act.
I, yeah, I specifically was focusing on no funds at all, but.
Well, they do have their own.
We have just previously approved green space spending, so I'm glad that we added. If not, I will then.
No, it's fine.
You'll accept that. All right. Further discussion on this item? The motion is to allow park board members to continue with like improvements without using POS Act funds. All in favor, please signify by raising a yes and a no.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I just have one question. Are they planning, are there, are there other things that are supposed to be happening right now at other parks? Because like, I thought it was just the Augusta right now, but I didn't know if we're getting in the way of other good business.
The only other things that we had going are Triangle, where we were planning on doing a handicap ramp and dealing with the water account.
But none of those places have been submitted to us.
No, they were going to be submitted for the next, the next meeting, which I can still do.
Also, just let everybody know that we, we, we have asked our city engineers to look at the parks with ADA perspective. So that will be more time every four, four months. What improvements we can make, make an ADA complaint. All right, are we good? All right, then we will move on to item number five. We do have public comments. Everyone has seen with their time.
I know I have not been around much in the past few months and that was a number of reasons for them, but I have been.
Mr. LeBron, you're.
I have to sit down. Okay, so some of the things, what I like to talk about today is to help me understand. And I will say for, I think all of you have a good knowledge of who I am, my background, maybe Krista doesn't. But I have worked on budgets for many years in the state of Texas. I managed one of the largest budgets in Article Two, Health and Human Services. And then I was on school board for two terms in the city council. And even today, I have responsibility for the budget, what we're seeing in the budget of a five oh one C three, where we have revenues of approximately $600,000 and we distribute money to charities in the area approximately to $400,000. So I am a little bit, so I get interested, you know, budget is kind of something that is appeals to me. So I looked at what you have in your packet and I looked at previous packet. And I know it is a proposed budget. I also understand that you changed your accounting systems to FundView. I'm pretty not, in fact, I've been looking at FundView to see if they would do something for a five oh one C three. So I kind of know what they do. My first, my first comment on the budget, and if you look at the budget for previous years, is that this episode, you have two columns. You say, this is the budget that was adopted. This is the budget that we propose. Well, the, the Texas government code requires municipalities to present a budget that itemizes for practical comparison, for comparison, expenditures included in the proposed budget and actual expenditures for the same or similar purposes made for the preceding year. It's kind of like, for me, from my perspective, I know what you adopted, but I have no way of knowing what you spent. So is it reasonable to, how do you, how do you say that it's appropriate to increase or decrease a category if you don't have an actual expenditure to compare to? That's how we budget. That's how a balanced budget is. And that's how it started. It was done last fiscal year. So that's my first comment. I think that if you're going to adopt this budget, then you do have a consultant. You have to have a budget that meets the requirement. And this is section one oh two point zero zero three of, of the chapter one oh two municipal budgets, subtitle eight, title four. So you need to have your expenditures. Yes, your fiscal year is not ended, but you can project. You project based on what you're doing, what your expenditures are going to be for the fiscal year. So that's my general observation. Then I looked at the budget in detail and I have some, some comments. Your water service franchise shows a reduction of $24,000. It might be a good reason for it, but in a significant degree, is this in keeping with what you received in the year? I can't tell because I don't know what you received in the year, which takes me back to FundView. FundView is a general ledger. All of that information should be in your FundView if it's being maintained properly. I don't know. I hear a lot about the city manager didn't or didn't or did, but. So those, that's one of the things, that's an example. I'm not going to go through every line. I don't want to talk for the next two hours. Some of the things that are kind of expenses in general, I have a general comment. How can you project your expenses? Is it reasonable to say you're going to spend what was appropriated last year? Did you spend more? Did you spend less? Did you require budget amendments? I mean, I just went through my, to the budget. We just approved a budget for a five oh one C three last month. And we checked, we, we have a monthly report. We know what our expenditures is. We review the budget and we adjusted some upwards, some downwards. So municipal court, and I think you corrected that, you had an amount, and I know we don't have a municipal court. And so I think that has been corrected. I still see there's a prosecutor. And I wonder why you don't have a court, you don't have a prosecutor, but that's, that's a very small thing. One concern I have is, I'll be very honest with you, we all have pet projects, okay? And I had a pet project when I was in council and that was the Platinum Road panel. And we had a grant of $427,000. And we, that was good money that came from the department. we, that was good money that came from the Department of Treasury. It's money that came with reporting requirements. It's money that came with timeframes for implementation of the projects. And once or twice. Uh, even though I was kind of away from the city, maybe once or twice, I contacted Mr. Rule because I was concerned. In fact, I spoke to you, Linnea, about it too, because I have a concern about the timelines and the reporting and what are we doing? So you have the drainage funds, then Mr. Rule explained to me that he had a new accounting system and he had moved this into a revenue stream. That it was not gonna be counted as revenue. And it, I don't have an issue with that as long as it's restricted. Because it is restricted by, we go back to the grant and the terms of the grant that you have for parks, so that this grant also has terms. These are exclusively federal dollars. The city never had to match. And there is the risk that if you do not meet the requirements established by the Treasury, they will demand the money to be returned. So that's a concern. That's why I requested the information. It didn't. I should have requested the information before I spoke today. Then drainage planning. Maybe this is just semantics. This, this grant was not awarded to plan. This grant very clearly came out as a result of COVID to help, it will cut, to help communities repair, improve. Uh, we were not initially eligible. But when they had extra funds, they decided to divide it among the smaller cities. So my concern is, maybe semantics, but, um. The, the, the award is very clear that you are to improve or repair, not plan. Yes, you can use the funds to pay consultants or to pay somebody to advise you, but only as part of the implementation. The other thing that I found missing here is if you compare it to the twenty, to the previous comment and the previous budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. When you go, uh, um. When you put the detail at the beginning of revenues, then you have another category, a category called other funding sources, sources, and it talks about the fund balance. I don't find in this budget any information on what is the fund balance. I don't find it, so. I will say this is just me and, um. These are my observations. This is done in the spirit of understanding. And I know you cannot communicate with me, but others, I know citizens may also have similar questions. Going back to my roots of, uh, Stephen Covey, please help me understand, please help the citizens understand how this budget works. Because on the face of it, it does not. It is not compliant with the government code. And I do not understand how you can project with having your actual expenditures. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And you stay with that?
Stay with that.
Yes, sir. Um, I bear your under concerns of the actuals. When we started the process, they were in place. Councilmember Linnea Bailey assisted with that and provided projections. We did end up removing them because there were known inaccuracies in what was available, and we are waiting on them to be completed in order to be included in the final version, and we have people working on it.
So you are aware of this?
No, this is gonna back and forth. That's the statement. So we do have someone working on it. Secondly, the ARCA funds, we have discussed in both public meetings multiple times. We've actually addressed this thing concerning with you before. Kevin Rule claimed the funds because there was a change in the claim process that allowed them to be claimed for other things and removed the stipulations regarding timeline and those factors you're concerned about. The funds were already claimed under those new guidelines. City Council has repetitively earmarked and restricted them for drainage work. The reason that they're earmarked for planning at this time is because those are our initial anticipated costs for drainage projects at this time. Secondly, the five thousand dollars for the prosecutor, we discussed in the last meeting. I encourage you to go back and watch those minutes because we talked about why we removed the cost within the support and why we kept that there. Um, with the reduction in the water fees, I can't speak to that directly and in getting the actuals repaired and cleaned up, that these numbers could be subject to change in the final round. So we, we don't know. But what I can tell you is that we did just update our franchise agreement and that through that three-year-long process, we learned that there were some errors in the way they were calculating our payment. Yes, sorry. Next, I do agree that, um. I want to be sure on the ARCA funds. And I have made a note to make sure that the statement issued by Kevin Rule was factual, as we have since learned he was not always factual and truthful with us.
What, if I may speak to that? Okay, no, I was gonna speak that I, my concern was that there was no expla, when I asked the question, going back to my statement, when I asked the question that I did not get a sense of assurance that there had been communication with the Governor's Division of Emergency Management or the Treasury to make change. That's all.
So. I would like counsel to know that the mayor and myself and Kevin Rule were sitting in a meeting with ARCA. Um, and we were about to be going through the process online to file all the correct paperwork to make sure that we get everything in order about the restricted funds. And we were working, and I forgot the person's name who were working, but that was in, was in our room, and we were online in this discussion. Kevin cited a specific code in the law regarding art funds, and the fact that it's under five million, we are allowed to take the funds and put it into our unrestricted funds and utilize them in any way we wanted. And we confirmed it with the person from art. And they said, oh, we'd like to go with that direction. And Kevin said, yes, okay, well, you fill out this form. So we filled out that form. So basically, the art funds that were given, the, the deadlines, the restrictions, all that was removed because there was a a section of the law that if it's under five million dollars award, we can do that. What council, as council member Heinz, sorry, Mayor Tom Heinz referred to is council still wanted to create a restriction that these are about the range of stuff. We didn't wanna remove it, but we removed it from the legal restrictions.
Yeah, and you can actually go back and research the history on what was going on in the federal government with that because they had done these grants, and unfortunately, they weren't getting a lot of applications, and what they determined was they were too restrictive for smaller cities. And so that's when they added that different cap and said, anything under that, like, you know, we're, we're, you're good. You can go ahead and claim them without all of this process, so.
And so we did.
What?
The paperwork.
I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well. Let me just, one comment.
Well, this is not a comment, this is a statement.
Oh.
Conversation. You've got a fact that you would like to share.
I have a good fact. Let's share. Um, in working out the the budgets. I do take time. I have like five column worksheet where it included our current budget, our current costs to date. Uh, the twenty twenty-two audited financial statement column, the twenty twenty-three audited financial statement column. I took averages. I, I compared. Now, you don't see that here, but a lot of that workup number that you're talking about was done.
In the past minutes.
Yep, yes, to get to where we are in a lot of items. Where we can clearly delineate and see the history, they are a part of this budget.
Thank you. Um, okay, so, um, I'm gonna, it is, I've got five twenty-two. We're turning into a workshop on budget to discuss bottom numbers to the proposed annual operating budget, and we're now in workshop. Mayor for town?
Um, I know that Mike found an error in calculation on the cover sheet, so there is an update to that. That will come forth on the September eleventh meeting. Um, it's essentially the property taxes raise number incorporates all of the revenue instead of focusing on MNO. So it was just just my fault, really. I was trying to produce this last minute on Friday because we didn't have it in the packet, and it was a necessary component. And my, um, just the slip up there, but he's got the, the numbers fixed. And it doesn't impact our budget a whole lot. The cover sheet's the main item typo essentially you could equate it to. And then on the, the main budget, the number is actually, um. Slightly different, and I lost his email. He might be able to come up with it a little bit quicker, but, um, we'll get that on the September eleventh meeting as well. It is, uh, three, so it's supposed to say three three hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So it actually increases it a little bit. And then the, um. The difference is actually sixty-two dollars between the two MNOs. That big difference you see on the cover sheet relates to the, also the drop in our debt circles, which doesn't actually count. It shouldn't be counted, and so that was a mistake. Um, overall, everything else is, is good. Correct? Aye, or?
Yeah, yeah, you're correct. Um, with that, with that new budgeted amount, it's just sixty-two dollars less than your current fiscal year. So that, that revenue line item should read three sixty-four nine thirty-eight.
At the, the top there. And then on the cover sheet, the difference is not forty thousand dollars and sixty-two dollars. The forty thousand includes the change in the debt service as well, which is.
This is page fifty-six, where we're talking about.
Um, I, the cover sheet is page forty-nine, and then the change in the the revenue, the MNO revenue on the budget is page fifty.
Of the package?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you have downloaded that with your packet.
I don't, I.
I don't know what to tell you.
It's over here. I can, I can.
See, that forty-four thousand, that's also including the debt service drop, so that's I, the mistake I made there. Just out of practice with these sheets. And then if you go down on the budget, down, 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 down. Right there, that number changed. And then if you notice, these documents are updated on eight twenty-three with the number changes because when we last approved this, we were working with a debt rate calculation based on estimates still. But once we got the county numbers that we all just saw in this packet, we got our actual debt rate amount, and so that had to be updated. Um.
So. Are we making these changes somewhere?
Uh.
As we, as we roll?
I can.
Afternoon.
We can. We can definitely put it on the screen and do it.
But, but we will be. I mean, next item is to adopt the MINTA.
Yeah, and I guess unless there's any, does anyone have anything to suggest to change or add?
Yeah, that would be nice.
I did wanna look at the engineering one more time. Um. I think it's good, though. Okay. I don't have any additional changes other than fixing those typos. And then we, we do need to add the actuals, and Mike is aware of that. Mr. Bayes is aware of that. Um, and that is the plan. We, we acknowledge you don't pass your final budget without, and that is part of the legal requirement.
So that'll basically take the place of this notes column?
Yes, I mean, we will keep the notes column, but as far as what's published, we don't, we wouldn't have that, and, um, and I do believe that we were wanting to discuss. I mentioned it in the last meeting, and, and Mr. Bayes was gonna bring us some numbers, so in your did you email it to everyone or just me?
Yeah. Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit. I've, I've been working on a, a budget that demonstrates, you know, your, your last fiscal year's um, approved budget as well as your actuals and then your projected. Um, I anticipate having that done by the end of this week. I've just been really careful with, you know, trying to go through each account and make sure that we're capturing everything and um, and so that's kind of where, where the delay is. But yeah, you, you'll be able to have that, that full budget before the budget workshop and be able to share that with your community, uh, prior to that budget workshop hearing, um, that I believe on, uh, later in, in, uh, September, so.
There was a comment at the last meeting that maybe our payrolls were high. So I, um. I went to TML and I isolated, uh, general law five base cities. There are six hundred and eight of them. I studied the cities that are most similar to Wood Creek in that our ratio of, um. Property tax to total is about fifty percent. So we're not comparing ourselves to other highly commercial cities. And then I I made several graphs. Uh, Wood Creek is maybe a little high in salaries, but not a lot. Uh, here, in that graph of where we stand compared to a number of other cities are very similar. Now here is last year, or we were a little bit higher, but we dropped our salaries thirty thousand. So we actually are quite well in line with what comparable cities.
Okay, so, so where are the silver coming from?
What?
The totals that you're showing, the, the comparative totals, it's like, these are, these are cities of less than two thousand people, um, with staff of, for the, you know, the staff is made up of, you know, uh, city administrator, city secretary, or so, so those are, those would be similar cities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering what your criteria.
Um, the criteria was here. All right. It is city size, I mean, um. Let's say. Archer City Village of Briar Creek. That, they had similar total revenue of a million, uh, three hundred and fifty-one thousand with added lower tax. So that's comparable to us. And in this one, the city had only sixty-five thousand in salaries. This city, um, city of Uber, they have seven hundred thousand in adware tax, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand overall tax. That's very similar to us. It's about a fifty percent ratio. Now, they have, uh, management executive fifty-six, city secretary fifty-two, city clerk seventy-five. This ratio of, uh, they're on my schedule here. It's very similar to what.
You said their, their combined tax, they grew about nine hundred thousand?
Nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, their total revenues.
Oh, total revenues.
Yes, and that's about a fifty percent ratio of adware tax to other miscellaneous taxes, uh, revenues. Eldor, same thing. They have adware of five hundred and ninety, total, so revenue of one point four. Um, and then they're okay, that would be on my schedule. So I carefully went through and fixed similar city.
I need to show you, Charles.
Okay, so I named the Briar Creek Cooper, uh, so you can see how I compared. I just, I didn't look at all, six hundred.
So you can see that, huh? Like, you're in whole, this way.
So, um.
Yeah, so. So according to this, we have the top highest salaries of any of the cities that you look at, the four highest.
In, in those, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, oh, and I also had a, what I would add. Salaries, uh, where I can isolate salaries. City manager on these, they didn't always have to see exact ones, but when I could find them. Uh, city manager, ninety-one thousand, Walmart, twenty-five thousand, inside part-time. Cooper, fifty-six thousand, Salado, hundred and fifty-three. Cooper fifty-six thousand, Salado hundred and fifty-three. City secretary fifty-four, seventy, fifty-two, forty-three, seventy-five. City clerk, forty-two, seventy-four. So these are comparable type cities and I got specifics.
Comparable to Salado.
Oh, so well, in my ratios. Oh, yeah, okay. What I was asking Mr. Bayes, um, and we kind of got off topic with if he had sent this salary, for example, because we actually
asked him to provide some comparables and so he did. Um, and they, you know, it's kind of arranged Martindale's forty-eight thousand, um, for one of the specific positions that we were looking at. So, I mean, based on your charts, we're over double what most cities that are like us are, uh, in regard, and like you said, we're the basically the fourth highest. Um, so and I did have a question on this item. If we're reducing, um, salaries, but we wanted to be clear about the scale of salaries because part of this conversation started with the fact that we just scaled our city administrator down thirty thousand dollars or so, right? But now, so that salary is now out of balance with their subordinates who, who are proposing subordinates, right? So in theory, the two administrative positions, city administrator and city secretary should scale together because they are the two administrative positions and we haven't scaled the other one. In addition, that salary is way over the comparable cities that Mr. Bayes prepared for us in, in regards of that administrative position. So, right, and you're confirming it. So my question then, Mr. Bayes, is if we in the budget do a reduction, is there a way to clarify that we're targeting administrative salaries only? I know we've already done the city administrator. It would then fall for the city secretaries.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I, I, I. Yeah, I think as you go through, uh, sorry to interrupt you. Yeah, I think as you go through and you're looking at salaries as a whole, since you guys have already made kind of move at, at the top of your organizational chart and the city administrator, you would, you would just say the council wanted to, uh, look for congruency in those salaries. And so, you know, like you had said, they're, they're in most organizational structures. Uh, the city administrator is going to be top of the organizational structure and then you're going to build the salaries, uh, theoretically down from there to create, you know, hierarchical, uh, levels within your employees. And so kind of comparing those salaries, you know, you do have a position that is, that is in the, the higher range, uh, within the region. And, and also I want to reiterate that, you know, salaries, um, and salary surveys can be very, very complicated and, and intricate in the sense that, you know, there is a definite regional approach to looking at a salary. Uh, you also want to, uh, consider the education and experience requirements that, uh, those cities may or may not have for those different positions. Um, and, and certainly cost of living always comes into impact when, when you're looking at, at employees as well because uh, typically you want to be able to have a, an employee reside somewhat close to the community they're going to be working in. And so there's a lot that goes into a, a salary survey and that's kind of where I try to focus more regionally when I'm looking at salaries. Um, and certainly there's going to be some difference in size, you know, for instance, you know, San Marcos i- isn't a comparable city, even though it's in the same region because of their, their ability to, um, im- impart salary to their employees, but also the, the number of employees and workload is, is extremely different in those larger cities. And so you know, kind of what I tried to prepare is, is, uh, just information based on your region and then leave it up to you guys to kind of look and see where you fall with, with similar cities that you feel are, are comparable. Um, and also some cities don't report, uh, what their salaries are. And so, you know, it, it's somewhat difficult to reach out to every single city and see what their salaries are, especially in, in a short period of time. But, uh, I think it would, you know, if, if council chooses to move money and make it, uh, concurrent where all of your positions, uh, fall in line with each other. Um, I think, I think that'd be, um, a move that, that would be up for your discussion.
So in order to do that, would I say a twenty, twenty thousand dollar reduction on that budget and budget line item tonight? And then what is my cleanup to designate that it's specifically for scaling of the city administrator and city secretary positions?
Yeah, I would just, uh, say you, you, you would, you would bring your, uh, salaries in, into congruency, uh, with each other based on your organizational structure.
And that's just something that happens later? Is there another council motion for that?
Yeah, I, I think if you, yeah, yeah, I think the next council, uh, action item is to approve whatever amendments you guys make to the budget in this workshop. And so, you know, if you guys make that change, uh, in this particular, uh, point of your agenda, then council would have the ability to approve that change as the proposed budget moves forward, uh, through, you know, the, uh, public hearing and then final passage.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna propose that twenty thousand dollar reduction to bring that salary in congruence with organizational structure. We won't be like voting right now, but we do need sort of like a consensus to make that alteration in the document.
I I will, I agree with that.
Um.
Because knowing that in the future we will have the actual requirements of how it's represented individually. Um, are we allowed to discuss individual salaries in opening? Okay, I didn't think so. But I think that might, I just recently found out. And okay, so.
And Mayor, Mayor, if I, if I may, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. I would, if we're going to be talking about budget changes, then I would like to talk about something else. In my research, um, I also found out that Wood Creek is, is way ahead of all the cities I studied in terms of what we pay for attorney's fees. We are way above everyone. And that is what we're paying this year. Our projected is a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
With a code update, which is.
This is with the code update. This is without. Just, we still are way above other cities. Twenty. Eldor, Salado, Briar Cliff, and part of the reasons why I have these, these are the ones that reveal what they pay their city attorneys. Some of them don't have a line item at all, but we, we do pay more for our city attorney than normal city. We, um, literally pays eighty thousand.
Are they doing a code update?
Great. About the code update.
Because, because remember, uh, Mr. Deck was talking about.
Right.
The, the color pick, what really it was.
Um, are we going to have a time when we need to have a subdivision code? Our existing properties are not large enough. We have probably a hundred and sixty lots left, maybe fifty of those are not buildable. We don't have a large enough parcel that we, we would need to have a subdivision. Now, if we're talking about the ETJ with recent changes in state law, um, parcels can just be withdrawn from our ETJ. And because county restrictions to development are much less stringent than ours. So do we really need to spend fifty thousand dollars on us, a subdivision ordinance upgrade?
If I may speak to that, um. So we've been instructed by the, through the comprehensive plan that, that citizens wish us to protect the charm and character of our city. One of those elements, as I read it, is that we don't break up our city into tiny, you know, standard sized city lots, which are fourteen hundred square feet. Um, and we just blanket the entire city with that. And that's what a subdivision does, which is if I have a half acre, um, I believe I did the research once, I could get four lots out of my half acre. And then there are lots that exist like that all across the city is, and that's what a subdivision chapter has right now. That like our subdivision code addresses people who come forward and go, I bought a half acre lot. I'm going to break it into four pieces. Not in print, man. But there are other places in that, in the city. Um, our current subdivision code and our development code doesn't abide by state code. It doesn't protect the city in the way that it can, in the way that it's allowed, the, the state allows us to protect the city's wishes and our citizens' wishes when it comes to protecting the charm and the character of Wood Creek. That's why those major, like we've had multiple city attorneys, we've had multiple city engineers who have looked at these, those specific sections of our code and like, this is the big monster in your city. This is all sorts of problematic. So if you wish to continue, if council wishes to continue allowing that vulnerability in our code, then we don't address it. I disagree with that.
Um, just real quick, uh, Mr. Roberts said the average lot was fourteen hundred square feet. I believe he meant fourteen thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Um, and more like eleven thousand square feet, forty thousand five hundred and sixty square feet is that, is a square acre. So approximately eleven square, a quarter acre is about eleven thousand square feet. And yes, we do have certain places that are, this is most of our information, that are smaller lots down, um, Big Tarview and, um, and, and at the other end, actually, um, uh, the circle at the end of, of, of Doolittle has smaller lots. But for the most part, they're about a quarter, about eleven thousand to twelve thousand square feet. And we don't have that many left here in the city of Wood Creek to create, uh, to be that concerned about subdivisions. Primarily there in the ETJ and the Oaks project. I don't know of any others that, that are immediately something that are concerned at this point.
Uh, hopefully. I have this. Could you just give me all yours over there? Uh, actually, guess what? I'm a huge nerd and I already measured all the lots. And this goes over here. And so there are actually a lot of lots that could be subdivided in the city of Wood Creek. And if you could just ignore my crazy desktop again.
Mike, do you want to speak immediately? I, you got your hand up. Or you just want to be in line?
Yeah, I, I can just be in line, Mayor. I'm keeping notes.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to point out, oh my gosh, it's not visible, but all those green dots all throughout the city are all lots that currently could be subdivided under our code because we have no minimum lot sizes designated as well. And so by focusing on subdivision alone, we're actually missing the larger project, which is the, one, we've already drafted updates of the entire land use code. So all of that preliminary work is ready to go for the, the attorney. And so what they would be doing on land use would actually be reviewing proposes, um, proposed changes, right? Um, we also can't continue ignoring wherever we're out of alignment with the state code. That ha- that has to get fixed. And then, you know, anytime our code's referencing code that's not there, we have to fix that. Um, one of the bigger issues we also have is we tend to assign rates and fees in our code rather than rest, referencing our master rate and fee schedule, which is updated annually with the budget, which is where you would adjust those fees. By referencing them in our code, we create this cleanup mess because every time we have to change a fee, we have to go find everywhere versus just referencing that one schedule. That's the more appropriate procedure. Uh, now the brick matter overlay already took care of all these really massive lots over here that could not be subdivided, but based on the assumption of SF one, um, lacking minimum lot sizes designated, this calculation is based on, um, the minimums of what you could do. Now that doesn't mean that people would come in and subdivide these lots in two, but every single one of these ones with a green dot can be subdivided into two. All of this strip of Augusta Lane, several of these over here on, in your area, including your lot. Council member Bailey, um, Canyon Creek has another couple here, a couple over here in the Champions Court. And these are really concerning because the access in these roads is already extremely diminished. And, and then people tend to say, well, there's already a house there. And I encourage all of y'all to go to Westlake. My great grandmother's house was torn down and there are now three houses in its place. So, uh, yeah, this, what happened to Westlake can very much happen here. Um, and with the drive of Blue Hole being right here, uh, affordable housing and, or increased housing in this area is going to continue to be a demand. Um, and, you know, as long as our code remains the way it is, there's not a lot of protections on that front. Um, but I just want to reiterate, the code fee that we've set aside for that isn't just about our subdivision code at all. It's actually a pretty comprehensive program, um, touching throughout a bunch of areas and it honors the work that the ordinance review committee has done because they sent us a lot of suggestions that we essentially said, great, thank you. We're going to get with our attorney on. So we've had volunteers working for two years on code updates that we need to finish up that work. So I just wanted to give everyone that visual.
Thank you.
One more. Um, didn't we change our minimum lot sizes?
No, ma'am. It got voted down and, uh, and it will likely come back because we still need minimum lot sizes designated in our zoning. That's not normal for us to just make people do a calculation to figure it out. Um, you typically designate what they're supposed to, and that doesn't impact as, like a lot that's already plotted, if that makes sense. What it would do is impact any of those lots in the future. And we have it proposed. It passed all the way through coun- to council and then um, I don't remember the exact, we had a rogue council member derail that one, but, uh, yeah. Okay. So with you guys' approval, I'm gonna go ahead and fix this number to what Mike, his calculations, um, were on this document here. Um, is there a way to freeze the screen?
Freeze it?
On the remote?
Freeze it?
We can freeze the screen usually.
Uh-huh. Here's the remote.
Okay, I'll just go to my phone. Cause I have to flip back and forth in my email and that's not appropriate because there's private and sensitive information in it.
Black the screen.
Yeah. But I was gonna put Mike's, Mike's adjustment and then, um, the adjustment on the salary proposed. And then the last thing we need to clean up is actually okay. Um, the last thing we need to clean up is that we don't actually have a zero budget and maybe Mike can speak to that, the importance of this budget balance being zeroed back out and that's either, I mean, right? Because we can't, we can't show that we're proposing the income money that we don't plan to spend, right? That's kind of a no-no. So that's the other kind of cleanup item we have. We have the
The fourteen.
Yeah. And so I've got here, can it be used towards capital improvements or do we have to zero out that upper budget first?
If the salary number goes down, it's just.
Yeah, but that has to be.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
If it doesn't, then.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll mark it.
Okay, Mike, you had your hand up. You want to speak?
I was just gonna clarify a couple of things that you guys had talked about originally. Um, on the salaries, it's important that you guys were only, you're only talking about the positions in any type of budget workshop. You're not actually talking about the personnel. So the, these considerations for salary are not based on who occupies the position within your organization. It's purely just the position. Um, the other thing with the city attorney's fees, I, I wanted to address that a little bit. Your, your, uh, structure of how you guys interact with your city attorney is a little bit unique for cities in the sense that, uh, council members do a, a lot of work and, and work, uh, you know, kind of hand in hand with the city attorney as you guys are or bringing ordinances and different things, which certainly can impact the, the number of billboard hours that your city attorney is getting. And so some of, some of that, uh, city attorney, uh, congruency that, that, that you're looking at is because of your structure and how you do things. Um, and so, you know, that I would just make sure you're keeping that into account. Um, and then I, speaking to the subdivision ordinance, uh, subdivision ordinance is the best way to regulate growth within your community. Um, the, the, uh, state has pretty much removed most building code restrictions. Um, the, the, uh, state has pretty much removed most building code restrictions and, and most things that cities can do to really regulate from materials to different items, you know, of what appearance looks like. So subdivisions is really where you have the biggest bang for your buck as far as trying to keep your, your unique community a certain way. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
No, I don't. I was trying to just block it out for a second.
I've got it.
I'd also be like more inclined to not worry about the subdivision code if we already hadn't had issues with like loopholes and problems in it. And one of the big things the friendly staff hasn't chimed in about was that, um, complaints from the last three years that have been a council over from staff regarding the process involved with our plot submission and design submission, um, we're trying to address those because what's in our code is redundant and messy. And, um, isn't very clear, like, it, first off, it doesn't match state code either. Uh, it, there's these improper terms used, these kind of deadlines the city's trying to claim, but we can't actually legally claim from the state. But really, when it goes into listing all the documents and requirements, it gets pretty confusing. And, um, developers are pretty consistently complaining. In fact, until we had Mr. Burton create, uh, some comprehensive submission lists, um, there was no way, I mean, it was just a mess. And people were constantly confused about where they were in the process, if they turned in all their documents or not. A lot of the, the documents required were based on a pre-digital era. So we don't necessarily get all those paper copies anymore like we used to, nor do we, um, provide paper copies like that for access. Most things have gone, gone digital. And so, um, that's kind of another kind of oopsie moment in our code is it's asking for these crazy printouts of everything with I mean, if we had offices in three different buildings, might be relevant, but we work ten feet from each other, so. Yeah, thank you. Um, just kind of some additional notes on that. And, you know, it doesn't mean we have to spend it either. You know, this is us trying to make sure we, we have what we need.
What have we budgeted for new construction?
You used, you're not supposed to
No, you have it in the packet there. I'm going to get it back on the screen. I'm just trying to address the calculation error so that we are looking at accurate numbers today. Other for fifteen hundred. That permit, building, new construction?
Mr. Green, go through that, Jim.
What was the question of looking at the
What did we budgeted for new construction for the upcoming year?
We have a thousand.
Okay.
Permits, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, permits and other
And what would that represent? One house?
Yes.
One house?
Yes.
So if we're finding places for that, fourteen to be moved out, that would actually be a good number to decrease it.
With actually, uh, like thirty-four thousand dollars now. With the reduction and stuff into, you know, uh, scaling of salaries for those positions.
We're trying to find thirty-four thousand.
We need to plug it out somewhere else to spend it.
Well, let's go off the names and think, well, let's
Sixty-two, yes.
That is preference.
And these numbers are blended, I think.
So we have to adjust all the healthcare ordering with all this?
But we're not changing. There was an assumption that because one position was changed, we'll take it all out of another. Or we just talk about maybe a, an adjustment to the total number?
No, it's the administrative positions in particular. There's, there's only two cities, two positions in our city that are seen as administrative. City secretary and city administrator. And if we are putting the city administrator over everyone, but yet not allocating them a salary to end, you know, to kind of that's comparable for that, that structure of employment, then we've kind of gotten bottom heavy.
Um, that happens sometimes. Okay. But we're not specifically, we're not designating this position's going to get reduced, that one not.
Not in this budget now. That has to be a whole separate
Yes.
process.
I do need my self-help question. Mike, um, on the non, uh, the no new revenue rate, tax rate worksheet, um, you had me correct this number because I was accidentally using debt service as well. Do you have the percent calculated on, on hand now or? Or I just look at what?
Can you, can you repeat that? It broke up a little bit.
So on the no new revenue rate, tax, rate, budget cover sheet, um, there's that percent decrease. So sixty-two dollars is what percent? Like, oh, nothing? I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'm not looking at the new, no new revenue sheet. Um, but I, I, I use the calculation that is based on the spreadsheet that was provided by the county at the, uh, M and O rate of point zero nine seven eight, which is the no new revenue for M and O. Um, and then multiplied that back into your property valuations, uh, which is where we got the, the sixty-two dollar difference uh, between what was budgeted last year and what would be, but, you know, uh, proposed for this year.
So how, how would I calculate that percent decrease of sixty-two dollars?
Yeah, I think it's a point, uh, uh, I've sent a, a sheet to, uh, Suzanne, uh, but I think it's a point zero zero two. Um, if you give me just one second, I can pull that up.
So did everyone understand what I meant about the debt rate collection? So if you look at this form here, right here, we're still using an estimate, so we were off. And so I had to plug in, that's what changed on Friday. We had to plug in that. And then what he's working on is this, uh, to this decrease here. The error I had made was including debt service. This is only based on M and L, just kind of in experience there. But while he looks for that percent for us, um, we can go back through our budget document. And this is that number that I was concerned about, the thirty-four thousand there. Um, we are supposed to have this portion of the budget be zeroed out because capital improvements are typically funded out of our reserves or through grants or through restricted funds as we already have earmarked like the bond and ARBA or whatever. Um, but to be able to tax citizens, we have to say we plan to spend this much. And so if we have an excess here, that's, that's a problem. And same with the deficit. That deficit means we'd have to do a reserve transfer. But, um, so we need to find somewhere to plug in that.
Well, so the tree board was increased from one thousand five hundred to three thousand eight hundred. I could just move it to four thousand. Um, so parks work was reduced from ten thousand to four thousand. Well, we just put it back at ten thousand.
Um, I'm
But referring to this, so, so from the car's perspective, I've got a pretty big proposed expense. Possibly with the
So maybe that all goes
So this is another question for Mike, I guess, that I have without distracting him from his work. Mike, are you good for a second?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've got that, uh, the change in your budget at the sixty-two dollars is a point zero 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 two decrease from last year's budget.
Perfect.
Three zeros.
Yeah, gotcha.
And then there
Okay.
Your property tax revenue that's raised from new property added is four hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Oops, okay. I will get that back. What'd you say?
Four hundred and seventy-three.
Thank you. Uh, all right.
That's a really good idea.
Well, I mean
Because we don't know and there's a possibility that the county may go, yes, on all this, but this, no. So we need to make funds for that. Um, for the, what the county approves of the POZAC grant?
They might not approve of
They might not approve everything.
We don't know that.
Yeah, so we need to, okay.
The other thing that, that, you know, I wanted to point out is, you know, discussions of, you know, more focus on uh, community outreach and events, including like a music program. We talked about sculpture in the park, a sculpture garden in the Tri- O Park. Uh, you know, that did, uh, you know, we could, we could, you know, really make some improvements. And that went through.
Well, maybe we just split it in half and just put it into those.
Wait, can I ask you a question, Mike? Are you frozen?
Oh, do I? Can you put that little arrow out of this, please?
Glad to do that.
Uh, so on our, our, our budget, right? We've got that general budget and then under it, we have our capital improvements proposed. Right now, the way this is structured and kind of how this city has previously done it, right or wrong, is that we have this concept of whatever is left over from the general budget, we have it carrying over into the capital improvement. Is that wrong to do that? Okay, that's what I learned in those email videos. So I'm going to go ahead and remove that line, um, just because that's not okay to do that. And that, we need to adjust these formulas again. I'll, I'll try to check that. So we really do have to find somewhere to put that thirty-four thousand dollars that we're So you're saying community relations, right, is what you said? Do we remember what, what number that is? Well, I left the tree stuff too.
Yeah.
Yeah. What, what number is that?
I agree, one two.
Let me push. Uh, I don't know that those over here.
What number?
It's under like other operating expenses, under training and development.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. So how much do we want to increase this? Is that thirteen thousand right now? And this is all city event? Do you want to add ten more to twenty-three thousand?
Yeah, probably.
So that leaves us twenty-four thousand five, four hundred and fifty-three dollars to find a home for.
And I think it all, it's parks.
Okay. Uh, specifically park improvement.
Park improvement, park advice. Because one, the four thousand is for events.
Yeah. And then, uh, okay, so parks and playground, we're going to add twenty-four thousand four five three. Twenty-four thousand four five three. So that's twenty-nine thousand four five three. Done. Okay.
And who knows, parks may still have, you know, next year have more really interesting projects for an order. Also, would acquisitions come from that section?
Nine, which is
Or acquisitions?
Maybe, maybe we, with an opportunity presented?
Yeah, it was like a ten dollar, dollar lot.
I mean, I was still, you know, it's like, like I, I've had conversations with, um, with Swindley Art Center. You know, about sculptures, murals, you know, art in the city, which, you know, like, we have, we have tremendous upside on that. Yeah, um, but there are costs involved.
Thank you.
Good man.
I'm going to continue. You'd be a troublemaker. Um, we still have a very high legal budget. Even if we keep, keep the fifty thousand in, we spent fifty thousand last year. That was our budget. We're sixty now. Um, if we reduce that legal by another ten thousand, maybe we could add that to our remodel and city hall. We still have a very high, and I know maybe that's a relationship with legal, but maybe we can
We can't allocate it to capital improvements projects?
That's that yellow section at the bottom. We can't put it into our budget.
Okay.
See it down here? So this is the main budget. This is the part we can't include in our budget.
But is she saying take budget money out of legal and put it into, into building maintenance?
Well, okay.
Well, I mean, maybe part of the budget could be classified as that, but that's a little
I know, still, I mean, if you're spending that much money, it sort of starts getting towards a capital improvement on them.
But we do have a line item that says building, maintenance and repair.
Right. Maintenance and repair is different than remodeling. And every year we use that amount because stuff break. And right now, this year, we're even having an issue in amendment because we've spent over, right? I mean, or
You'd be blowing up the building, slighting it and fail it and
Yeah.
Okay, then that makes sense, but I
You, can you tell me which exact line you're thinking of removing or reducing ten thousand of this, the legal?
Well, the elected body legal was parked up last year. It's ten now. In part, I remember my thinking then was, well, there's five city council members. We each should get two thousand dollars worth of legal.
Well, what this
But that's not how it's been working.
But I think what that was is city council legal is literally when council goes, hey, attorney, could you re- review this document and give us your input on it? He bill us with that versus
Staff is like, hey, is it legal for
Yeah.
Fill in the blank. Or do we, you know, like, the questions I asked just today, actually, are if you're repealing an ordinance, do you have to have another ordinance, even though you're not proposing something new, right?
Yeah.
That, we didn't have anyone with the training or authority to be able to answer that question, you know? And a quick shot to Charlie, I mean, I guess I could have contacted T M O, I mean, the elected body, so that really is
Let me, let me, just real, real quick, let me just say something. You did send me those emails and I answered them and I didn't bill for it. Like you, I didn't even bother putting an entry into the system for that. It's so easy to answer. So, I mean, I do pick and choose a little bit, you know, where I bill. I mean, it took me thirty seconds to answer that question. I'm not going to bill you for that. I mean, that, some lawyers probably would, but I just, I just don't. You know, on, on your legal fees, I'll work within whatever budget you want. It, I, I'm happy to do it. But the fact of the matter is with legal fees, it's, and I, you know, Mike might attest to this. It's, it's very difficult to budget for them because you don't know what issue is going to come up that's going to explode. That's going to set, necessitate legal services. So you could budget ten thousand dollars next year for legal services, but if you get sued, you're not going to spend ten thousand. You're going to spend a lot more. If you have a big subdivision or plating issue, it, I, so my point is, is you need to be, you know, you need to be sort of thoughtful in what it actually costs to get legal services. On the other hand, as the example given, you know, it was a, I'm not billing for every little email that I get that necessitates me giving a response.
Thank you. On this item in particular, we're also forgetting that there was a rate increase from the firm, Dinsenavaro firm. So if you look at our actuals from last year, we tried to stay commiserate with that rate increase on general and elected body. We actually brought down special cases because we're not really, that's not coming up all that often. So we actually reduced some. The only place we increased was that, that code update. And I mean, I don't know how many more people have to tell us that we need to do something to help people through doing it, but, um, you have just kind of like, we went up ten grand for general legal because partially because because partially because of that rate change. We want to have five grand for elected body because of the rate change. We reduce.
It would double, but also to, as you're, as you're, as you ask, I mean, if you're working on something and you need a legal opinion, you know, but you're going to bring this to council and you want everything to balance, um, then this is, it's always, but ever since I became mayor, I've always encouraged, if you need legal support, you ask for it.
We can just call Charlie direct.
This is nothing new.
Well, I did get approval to asking those questions, just FYI.
No, I want to know that. I mean, it's like, at some point, like, okay, you're crossing the line. You know, it's like, like you can go to TMO for that, ask Jim, ask Mike, you know, you don't need to go to Charlie for that. At, at his rate, when, you know, our city manager is on, on salary, right? So, um, but it's like, it's discretionary. I mean, we're asking you to, to use your judgment. But yeah, it's always been available to us ever since I became mayor. And I've had to take some heat for it.
I think we've done better pre-worked it. I mean, we've had, we've been able to reference our attorneys, ask the questions so that when it does finally get to us in front of council, we're not having to struggle with the, you know, the city attorney going, oh, you can't do that. Oh, no, well, careful on that one. Why don't we go to rework this? Like it's making less work to begin with.
Charlie, can I ask you, uh, one question? Just personal? No, it's not a personal question, but, but, um, but, you know, when, when we're working on something together, when you and I are working on something together, uh, do you tend to put that in elected body or do you tend to put that in general?
I, I only have one bill that I send out and, and so everything's in one bill. I don't, no one has asked me to separate how different billing, everything goes into one, into one invoice.
Okay, then I'll ask the voter, do you tend to put my requests of Charlie into general or into elected body?
Kind of depends.
Depends?
Yeah, kind of depends.
Okay.
He, he gives us a good description of what he's doing, so we have to make a decision. Is that general or that?
Okay.
You know, elected body.
Okay.
Can I make a request or like inquiry? So like, the ability for us to access the attorney was in place before the elected body line item. And it, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like by having this special line item, not only are we targeting the elected body, but we're also creating additional work for staff to code receipts. Should we not just wrap this all into general? I mean, when I, when we have a consult with Mr. Zach, it's a consult, like it, you know what I mean? Like it benefits only the city council. I can't consult him on personal city council issues of my own, if that makes sense. That's illegal. So I do think it's a little bit misleading because it kind of implies that he's working on pet projects, whereas none of the things we're working on with pertain to us personally.
I'd be a believer in that.
Yeah, I would too, because I think it's important distinction when you ask the question of how is he sending or we invoices? That makes sense.
But his invoice, I will, I will, I will tell you that, that his invoices um, are really pretty clear of what he did and for whom, which is how they can go in and code into elected body versus general. Um, so I mean, we've gotten access to the invoices and then kind of want to look at it and see if somebody's.
So.
From generally, well, let's just put it in general because we, you know, there's not enough information there for us to know what to do with. So it sounds like we're just adding work for every.
Yeah, well, well, that's what I thought was interesting is Mike previously, his conversation said he didn't have a main category of the budget and then have little subcategories under it, but maybe that's what this could be is just legal. And then little categories where we parse it out.
Well, Mike's trying to take our four hundred line items and have them agents for the.
But also this reduces Charlie's work. Not saying he won't provide an itemized list for us, but then he definitely have to go into that level of detail that eliminates that.
Good level of detail. I mean, I've seen it in his invoices, but it may not be on every line of.
I'm just saying, then that eliminates that back and forth of if they didn't understand what was, what to do with it. That's a waste of staff time. And then you've got the added going in encoding and having to read it each invoice so specifically. I'd like to streamline the process. I'd like to roll the ten grand into the forty thousand general legal.
Um, on all the cities that I studied, like this one, Cooper, they didn't all line it out, but salary, city attorney, between thousand nine hundred. In no city that I reviewed, did they have three or four lines. They just had this.
Well, that's what Mike was saying earlier is that, you know, we're unique and that we have a separate line item for this. Um, and, and I will, I will remind everyone that the reason we have a separate line item for this is that I was, I was um, encouraging council to seek counsel, two different departments. Um, and a, a council member didn't appreciate that and, and, you know, suggested that it be separated out, broken out. And we said, okay, fine, whatever.
So we could monitor it.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, and the monitoring, you know, I mean, we're, nobody's been abusing the, the privilege. Um, so yeah, it doesn't make sense to, to either.
So we're, so we're still leaving a special case of litigation or are we just?
Those are, are different and they are built differently because that is, and maybe Mr. Zach should really chime in, but like when the city faces a lawsuit, that's the litigation. When the city consults on a, like a, like we say, hey, Mr. Zach, we've got this weird building development request and this PDD document, can you review this PDD document for us? And we, we don't have building guidelines for PDDs. Another area of code that's a mess.
So that makes sense. Also, because some of that is potentially refundable shit, correct? So we do need to have it separated out.
It is. Well, not all of it, but.
Potentially.
I mean, we can build and bill for references.
Yeah. Okay.
You're good? You're going to roll?
I'm, I'm good.
Council?
Is there an option? So I know that I put in the ten thousand rather than the five, thinking each council member should get two thousand dollars worth of attorney time. So can we just reduce that back down? Can we just keep the attorney fees up at ten thousand?
So.
So right now, our general legal fees are at fifty thousand. That's it for a general legal fees. Is that not in keeping with?
Or in five?
Those only count should be face litigation or special cases. That is not our anticipated expenses for our work.
It's fifty thousand plus five and four.
Yes. Yes. And how are we with that number? But have we zeroed it out?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Sports of zero. Pushing forward, really kind of trying to do. What do you do?
Nothing. It'll be fine. Don't look at it.
Want to?
You're not flinching, council. All right. Any other workshop items? If none, we will come out of the budget workshop at six twenty and move on to item number six, which is definite appropriation to adopt amendment to the proposed annual operating budget.
I'm.
Ben?
I move that we adopt the proposed annual operating budget as amended.
I second.
All right. On favor, please, written, say aye. If you approve.
Aye.
All right. Opposed name? To nays, yeah, seven. All right, item number seven, discuss the appropriate action for those tax rate for fiscal twenty-four twenty-five.
I move that we accept the proposed tax rate of no new revenue.
I second.
What?
Which, I guess, sorry, but I don't believe we actually need to do that because we've already done that uh, in the last meeting. And we didn't make any changes. We just updated our cover sheet to be appropriate calculation. So I actually believe that this item is not needing a vote.
Mr. Bay, Mr. Zach, you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think you necessarily have to have it, but I think it's good because we can make sure that we get the notice published for, uh, the tax rate hearing. And, uh, we can go back to this date as far as, you know, when, when you guys had authorized the posting, uh, for that now rolling through.
Okay, um, but it ends.
All right. So the motion on the floor is to accept the proposed no new revenue tax rate for fiscal twenty-four twenty-five. On favor, please, written, say aye.
All right.
Nameless by votes. All right. Number eight, discuss the appropriate actions to accept the recommendation for the tree board to purchase twenty-five one gallon trees for the November ninth fall tree giveaway event using money from the Arbor Day event celebration.
So I move to accept the recommendation from the tree board to purchase twenty-five, uh, single gallon trees for the November ninth twenty twenty-four fall tree giveaway event using money from our Arbor Day event celebration.
Sorry.
So the, the tree board's working in conjunction with the president of the board to have a fall tree giveaway event, uh, on November ninth at Augusta Park. And the goal is to distribute twenty-five one gallon trees on a first come, first served, uh, to residents of the city. Um, we have about six hundred dollars left in our Arbor Day event celebration funds. So the plan was to have, uh, board member Jacob McElroy acting as a volunteer to reach out to his business contacts for pricing. Um, as it stands right now, the, the trees we're looking at are anywhere from fifteen to twenty dollars a piece for the single gallon ones. Uh, so we're requesting that council approve the purchase of these trees and, um, Jacob will provide an estimate of the tree purchased to city staff. Will then supply the payment directly to the vendor.
I'm second. On favor, please, written, say aye.
Okay.
Yeah, I will note that Mr. German was absent. Do we want to take a quick recess? Like, Tim, do we need ten minutes? Or do we want to go ahead and blow it through?
I'm going to go.
You're okay?
We go down.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so we will not recess. We'll go.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and go with number nine. Uh, which is discuss the appropriate actions about ordinance updating thirty point one six municipal secretary.
Mr. German. Thank you. I move the council about the ordinance updating chapter thirty dot one six municipal secretary.
Second.
Thank you. May I, may I?
Yes, please.
Very quick discussion. This ordinance represents the edit that council made to the draft ordinance and is now placed into the final formal ordinance format.
It was great. Thank you. Discussion? Go through. Right?
Yes, one.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, I've looked at, at all of this and, and I believe that there may be something that's, that's not quite, um, even with the municipal court, the municipal code. Um, in the, in the municipal code, it says, um, that, uh, the municipal secretary may be removed by a, a two thirds majority vote. And in this one, in, uh, powers and duties, I'm sorry, one above it. Um, uh, section A. Here in, um, here in three, it, it says a majority vote, which is not very clear. It, I, I make an amendment, uh, like make amendments, make it a two thirds majority vote of its members. Um, in this case, pretty much like it would be if it were in, um, the municipal code, uh, twenty point seven seven, point zero seven seven.
Here in a second. Um, I will point out, Mr. German, that, that that part of the code is specific to, um, removal for lack of competence. Um, and, and so that would still, that code still remains. So.
The, the, the code still applies. The code still applies. I, I left it as majority. I don't like, I don't even like reciting the removal provisions in there, um, quite honestly, uh, because of this type of confusion, but Texas, the Texas code will still apply. I left it as majority because you can, it, because that's the lesser number and you can remove for majority for misconduct, malfeasance, et cetera, et cetera. I don't like putting in two thirds because it makes it sound like you always have to be two thirds. Um, because it's more, it's higher than what the code would require for um, um, lack of competence. So that's why I left it like that when I reviewed it.
So perhaps Mr. Zach could be giving some clarification as to exactly what it means then?
It, it means that they can, that, that the city secretary can be removed by a majority vote, but only can, but only consistent with state law, which means it can be, they can only be removed by majority vote if it's for lack of competence. If it's, I mean, if it's for, um, misconduct, uh, associated with work essentially under the statute. But it would be two thirds if it's for lack of competence because that's the higher number and that's required by, by state law. I don't like putting the higher number, two thirds in there because then it makes it sound like, um, it has to be two thirds no matter what.
Lack of competence, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Zach, but, um, lack of competence seem to be, be hard to put a finger on. It's like hard to, hard to to prove, uh, compared to malfeasance or, you know, incompetence or, or whatever. So.
Yeah, sure. The way, yeah, yeah. The reason why that state law says lack of confidence is two thirds is because sometimes, I'm not saying it's always the case, but in sometimes lack of confidence is a more of a political decision than it is an actual, um, uh, decision on the person, on, you know, how the person operates. And so they, rather than a simple majority, the legislature decided it need to be a two thirds vote so that at least more than a majority lack confidence, right? But for purposes of misconduct, um, it should be a simple majority. It's written the way it's written. I mean, I didn't change it. One of the reasons I didn't change it is because I didn't want to spend a lot of time and energy and effort revising it um, because it works under the law. Uh, majority vote is required for misconduct. However, a two thirds vote, even though it's not stated in there, would still be required under state law.
Can I also speak to this?
Was?
So when this was brought forward, it was a little bit of a relief because this was actually how the city was presumptuously operating for the last three years. Meaning the city secretary position was assumed to be under the city administrator. And it was assumed that the city administrator would have hiring and firing authority on that role with a council set of approval. And so really what this code is, my understanding is kind of just modifying our general practice. Um, it doesn't, and I asked that question, does this interfere with state law? Because I was a little bit concerned about that in the last meeting and we kind of cleared by all of that. Um, and then, you know, all of this still, you know, those state procedures remain in place. So we're not circumventing, as Mr. Zach already talked about, um, the, uh, city secretary's right to be heard or, you know, uh, petition a choice uh, and, and, and request, you know, some time to, to argue their case. And so that was my understanding of this. And, and like I said, going into working for the city of Wood Creek as a volunteer, it was generally assumed that the city secretary was under the administrator. And then through the last, you know, year, especially with losing a city administrator again, we've really been confronted with how lacking our code is on some of these rents, like what happens when a city administrator resigns? We had to scramble and, and put code in place that it really does allow the mayor to step in and help the city function or allow, you know, so that's my take on this. And I guess I hope it's not wrong, but I, I think it's in keeping with the way our city already operates.
It is what we've been operating. Absolutely. And I would also, excuse me, I would also point out that, you know, because we're on item number nine, was it the municipal secretary ordinance? You know, the same rules for dismissal, if you will, would apply to, to. You know, the same rules for dismissal, if you will, would apply to, to any officer of the, I mean, still, I mean, if we were going to bring up the city administrator, this, the same rules apply. So we're not, we're not singling up the city secretary for, for treatment or, or anything else, it's just the way it is. Further discussion on number nine? All right, the motion is to adopt ordinance.
I just, um. Is this normally the way uh these ordinances look? It just appears rather negative compared to, I was looking at other cities. And they talk about the duties where this one comes right up and says how they'll be appointed. Um, and then talks about removing the city secretary, and I'm not sure what compensation shall be fixed from time to time. Um, is this a typical ordinance? This is typically how they're written?
I'll let our, our city administrator, our, I mean, our, our, Mr. Zek, either one or both.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Michael, uh, I would say there is no typical way that there are. I mean, I think if you were to go look up a bunch of different cities in the state of Texas, um, to the extent their, their codes are online, you would see them written multiple different ways.
But there is consistency between the two ordinances in terms of, you know, like item number D under the, I mean, when we get to it on the, on the administrator is. Administrator shall maybe be removed at any time by majority of.
And, and so that's just, forgive me, but I believe this is the structure of our code. I don't believe Councilmember Gromit altered the structures or design of the code.
I.
You inputted a section, but.
I formatted it as in I collect, not, not the city secretary, the code we're talking about right now, I didn't.
You didn't format that, that's what it looks like in our code, that's my memory.
Yes, but when we get to the next one, I, it was a long list in paragraph now, and I, the names are, and I believe we can get to that one.
All right, any further discussion on number nine, that dot ordinance number thirty dot sixteen municipal secretary? Not, um, on favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, as have it. Three votes to. All right, so we'll move on to number ten, discuss and take appropriate action through the dot ordinance number thirty dot one, got administrator.
Mayor, may I? I move that council adopts the ordinance updating after thirty point one five administrator.
One second.
Thank you, mayor, may I, please? On page seventy of the packet. I'm gonna let y'all get there.
Do we have to?
Yeah, because it's, it's a little detail, but I want you to actually see it. Page seventy of the packet, line. Oh.
What are you looking for?
Line twenty eight of the city administrator, so that's page sixty nine. Line twenty eight, um. The previous city attorney, when we were having this discussion previously, when we were talking about the city secretary position, we changed the line never. To the word not, based on their recommendation, we did that in the city secretary ordinance, um, but we didn't do it here. So with that information, I amend lines twenty eight of this ordinance by replacing the word never with the word not.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the wrong one here, no, not.
Is that something you can do for staff and, and send them to write the document? Okay.
If you'd like.
Because they got a lot of. And that is my second.
I just didn't want to do it in the document because council didn't create.
That would have been a needle.
All right, so, um, so I was trying to find where that is, and I'm not finding it.
Office established, which sixty nine?
I don't know, shall not have any, okay, okay. So the amendment then, or the, the edit is to um change never to not in line fifty eight under.
Line twenty eight.
Line twenty eight, line twenty eight under office status. I, I just didn't see never, I was, so, any objections? On favor, please signify by raising your hand. We'll pass that edit on to the, we'll pass that edit on to the, um, to the staff to make final version. All right, anything else, Mr. Gromit? Right?
Okay, sorry about this, but um. I looked at several other cities and these descriptions of their, seeing administrators, we manager. Are several pages, maybe, or two pages. This is too long in ordinance. It really, it's more confusing than declaratory. Um, I can't imagine why we need something to describe a job that other cities can do in a couple pages. And eight pages, I think it, you've never been accused of being too brief, but this is unlocked. A little confused, what? What do we need, what did you print out? The ordinance.
How many pages do you have?
Seven. Or just the code? Then to.
There's a.
But like, is it a spacing thing?
I.
You, you did add more section here.
I did add sections, but I do tend to want a clearer readability, so I do put more space between words. Where previous ordinances won't do a double space, because when they enter into a new section, I do a double space.
Um, do you have offhand any kind of concept of how many sections you added, or?
Let me.
Well, how can we go pull up the red line strike through if we, if we need to go back that far, but um.
So. Our city administering code. Was, is written in paragraph format, so that takes more space, because I take out a sentence out of a paragraph, out of a paragraph, and make it a bullet point.
Did you follow that?
Yeah, well, I also organized it because often the paragraphs would be talking about multiple different things at different places. So I had to put this up there, put that over there, and then I clarified, and.
So you added like the code of conduct, um, council activities, land use and development, boards and commissions, public relations, intergovernmental relations.
And everything that's put there is literally the, these, the assumptions and the things that already are happening, I just put it in to work.
I mean, I would ask, well, I mean, like, so what would you strike? I mean, what, what would you remove? What's, what's wrong with it, except that you think it's too long?
There are other cities.
I don't care what, no, I'm asking you what, I, what do you think is wrong, I don't care what other cities do, we're not other cities, we're Wood Creek.
Provide administrative direction and supervision, um. A lot of these seem to be redundant, they could be said in, in a clearer, you know, just provide financial oversight. Uh, there, there's just such a level of detail that really isn't, but, but you have too much detail, you lose clarity. So if someone were to look at this and say, what does your city administrator do? They have a difficult time defining it. Where, you know.
Um, I could do that, I'm sorry, but I could do that from, from the headings.
You know, implementing policies, ensuring all projects uh and functions operate efficiently, ensuring all local, state and federal laws are followed. That's what the city of Go-Bois says. So, um, the city of, in Texas, it's like, okay, city administrator of Texas, this is just from him out. It, it kind of defines what they're doing. I just don't think we need that level of detail to outline the city administrator's position.
One request and one point, my request being in the future, if we have major edits or reductions to propose that we do that on the first draft. Because by the time we're getting to the second draft, we're looking for like minor detail adjustments, so that we can proceed forward with, with passing. I'm not saying you can't make additional edits, but just these sort of massive overhauls, the time for that is when the changes first proposed. I'm not saying we can't discuss it tonight, but that would be my personal preference, because when we build agendas and we're looking at a second draft, we're typically kind of working off the operation in our head that this is almost a finished product and discussion would be minimal. That's my request, my point is I completely and one hundred percent disagree. After working with two different city managers here who did not seem to understand, one, state law, two, their role. How to respect council members and volunteers, um, what were they actually in charge of in the city and what they weren't, how to respect citizens, how to, I mean. I have, we, I have seen in the last three years, actual confusion, overstepping, mismanagement. Lack of direction and clarity, lots of assumptions, like we just talked about the idea that, that who the city administrator is in charge of. Our code was lacking on these fronts, big time, and while what we have in front of us is lengthy and detailed. I would say that if I was applying for a position and this is the kind of direction I got on the position, I would know exactly what I'm walking into. If I have a three sentence word that is just like, follow state law, and, you know, make sure business gets done, I have no idea what that actually means.
I want to, just a couple of things, you know, you, you mentioned that, you know, if it was shorter and be clearer, I, I'm nice, I kind of just, when I read this, I'd say this makes it very clear what's expected. You know, of the city manager, city administrator, you know, as the ordinance creating the position. If I was wanting to go in and, and get a more of a snapshot view, I would look at the job descriptions for the city administrator. Because it is, it is much more concise, but you know, ordinances internally, I think would bear me out on this, you know, ordinances are. Typically more detailed, because they have to sort of think about every question that might be asked. And so, and ordinance may be a little bit long, I mean, look at our code ordinances, it's that thick, you know, and it's because we have to clarify. You know, what we're trying to do in that particular area, and the city administrator is the most important paid staff person that we have. And is the, is the, you know, really the day to day face of the city. And I think it needs to be clear, I know that Mr. Burton has taken a look at this and, and, and says, yeah, that's kind of what I need to, to be doing, is I can see, I know that, that Mike has taken a look at it and. We, we really haven't gotten any pushback on it that I, that I'm aware of.
So I can go through this, and then, all right, I could ask the administrator, perform administrative task. To maintain control, and he could have a checklist, so I could go down each one of these items. And we could review if the administrator is doing everything required. And the things that you said were not covered, like lack of just respect for citizens, where is that covered here, or for city council?
Public relations. Uh, there's one, and also the uh code of conduct. Uh, those are both, uh, conflict of interest could also be seen as part of that.
That was a big section.
Yeah, um, so those are two areas where I would highlight that. Um, personnel, regards to how they treat other people in the office, I mean, I went in with the previous administrator yelling at people, and myself included. Uh, so. I did have one question though, um, about this ordinance. Um, I know that we are leaning towards the preference of administrator uh for the city. And forgive me, because I could just be forgetting, but how do we address the use of manager in other areas of the code to make sure?
Can I address that? So at the last meeting, we, as part of an option, we instructed the city attorney to write that specific ordinance that will.
Strike it off.
Blanket, that if it says this, it says now administer.
Okay.
So, so that's a coming.
Okay, because that's why I was like, I'm concerned about passing this without that. Um, specific, you know.
Yeah.
Is there a concern, because I think it almost always says both. But.
Yeah.
No concern?
If, if I could pop in really quick, I mean, it, it's pretty well understood in the industry, if you're not a home rule city, that you're going to be a city administrator or administrator title. Even though some codes, you know, refer to manager in different areas, usually if you're a home rule city, you, the, the term manager is, is more acceptable kind of in the industry.
Also, we never, the, the citizen has never voted on being a, a manager or council or a government, we are still all, man, man, without, without a doubt. All right, so, um. So let's go ahead and, and vote on item number ten to adopt ordinance updating thirty dot one five administrator, um, on favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Well, that was the amendment, correct?
Oh, no, yeah, we already voted on that.
Oh, we did, sorry. No, we're voting on the main motion.
I can hear you.
Um, nays? All right. Three ayes, two nays, the motion passes. Item number eleven, discussion, take five actions to designate locations for permanent radar sign installations at the entrances. To the city of Wood Creek located east and west Wood Creek Drive, Burke Meadow and Ranch Road twelve, and Augusta Garage near Little Roca Lane, mayor pretend.
I move that we send the designations of four permanent radar signs. To Freeland Turk as outlined in the packet.
A second. All right, so the, um, the fair price, um, we're going to send to our city engineers designated locations for the four permanent radar sign installations. Um, to be the entrances of the city, east Wood Creek Drive, west Wood Creek Drive, Brook Meadow, Ranch Road twelve, and Augusta Garage near Lower Roca. All right. Um.
Yeah, just to introduce this item, um, on page seventy six, you'll see two placements that Freeland Turk has already designated, that's the Burke Meadow entrance, the Wood Creek Drive and Ranch Road twelve entrance. And then in their packet, uh, they had an error, that packet we approved, and we said, okay, we approve, but we need to fix the radar signs, and they said, we understand, we understand. This is an effort to kind of clean up that error in their packet, and then the slight confusion in the council direction. Um, so when this item was originally proposed by myself, the intention was to beef up our neighborhood entrances to signify to incoming drivers. Uh, their rate of speed, but also our designated speed limits, and um, these are to coincide with existing speed limit signs, right? To sort of say, you know, here's the speed limit, whoa, you're going too fast, right? So Freeland Turk designated the spots, we did not pick those out ourselves, they based those on engineering practices. But where we kind of got off topic with that item is, um, at one point, we designated one over here at Champion Circle, and we left out one of our key entrances at Little Roca. Right, I don't want to get into the specifics of how all of that happened, but we have four radar signs purchased. We have four entrances to Wood Creek, this proposal is to basically set that fourth sign at the other entrance, and then. I would like for Freeland Turk in the future to consider other safety enhancement, and potentially you could consider other radar signs on our like auxiliary streets or. You know, the non feeder streets, the non entrances, um, in, in that possible program, so it's not like I'm, I'm saying Champion Circle gets nothing, no suit for you, it's. We, we, we're going to circle back to that, but right now we've got four, and we've got four entrances, so if you notice, I X out the one on Champion Circle. I made sure to include the one that they left off, which. I made sure to include the one that they left off, which was the error in their packet. And then I just, I, I added a proposed spot simply so you guys can understand what we're talking about, a visual there. And if you notice, it says draft proposal for visual, only Freeland Turk shall designate location. I'm not trying to. Like supplant there. Yeah, yes, sir, thank you, that's the right word. Um, so, you know, basically, hopefully you guys pass this so we can move forward on those four installations. And, um, give them clear direction for their, their good process.
Discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by a raise, you can say aye. Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Um, and thank you for that.
I will email.
And, uh, the item number twelve, um, discuss them in possible action to authorize Jim Burton as acting city manager. Just select a certified public accountant for the city of Wood Creek to enter into a contract with said individual or company for the duration of time not to exceed one year. And not for more than fifteen thousand dollars for twelve months of services, yours.
I move to offer as Jim Burton as acting city manager to select a certified public accountant for the city of Wood Creek. And to enter into a contract with said individual and or company for the duration of time not to exceed one year and not for more than fifteen thousand dollars for twelve months of service.
Richardson?
What would be the timing on this? We don't have to go to bed on this one, right?
No, we don't, forgot, we got a, a fair conservative contract. Um, we solicited a couple of proposals based off this with, um, um, do you ask?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, interviewed both companies, uh, that you have in front of you. So the, um, riders' dozens with the mayor and Mr. Bays. They were the two most, um, competent or not competent, but the two most qualified for what, what it is. Spoke with both companies or both highly qualified. Um, just reading through that, um, and after discussion, you know, there's some pros and cons above, but, um. My recommendation would be to go with the LaNoria one, just, um, they're a little smaller firm. And could, um, be more attentive to our needs. Um, the other one, the Peacock one, um, they're well versed in Funview. Um, running more so than LaNoria, but, um. And that, and Peacock is the one that, that Women uses. Uh, with Mr. Potek over there, that his concern is they're great, but they're sitting on a little bit slow. We have to get on a little bit to make sure we got it, and in my opinion. Yeah, with the necessity of needing somebody right now to help with our Funview issue. Um, LaNoria, uh, firm could, uh, jump right on it and give us the attention needed. And she also outlined. Immediate need now, you know, to spend a lot of time with, or on the topic. And then also, um, going for, for the year moving forward. For the other, um, firm, um, seemed to be a little bit higher charging, but they were kind of capital and need one, one. They would like to review it in, in this calendar year, December.
Their, their, yeah, their program or their proposal was, was for interim support. To the end of the year. Also, um, the, the, when you compare the hourly rates, um, the LaNoria proposal was. I, I think not just a little or, I think it was a significant little or. Um, their, their proposal to sort of front load it and say, okay, we're, we've got a three thousand dollar. You know, front end to get in there and get everything up to speed. And then from then on out, it's, you know, just sort of keeping up with the books and, and her estimate for the time. Um, seemed appropriate up from my experience, so I just, I just, it's a temporary proposal, but I thought it, I thought. It sort of dealt more plainly with, with what our, our act of aid was.
And is she familiar with Funview?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I will say, the other one, they have someone on staff that's much, well. The way she explained it herself was that she was almost as good as saying where, and then her underlies not so much. But, um, just LaNoria is very familiar with it, maybe not to the level of, say, any of the economy, but she definitely. And I think Mike will attest to it, it's pretty easy, simple, once we get going.
And then in the run.
Exactly.
Get this, this little thing cleaned up, you know, then, then it's just a whole different program.
So, and, and she too was spot on with our proposed budget for, uh, next year. So although we probably didn't, I guess, so next month, I will prepare as soon as possible tomorrow.
Kind of related question, do we have to do something to get our audit, our twenty-three audit online?
Yeah, I'll post it right now. Oh, you got it now? Okay, so, Ms. LeBron just couldn't find it, or it's since been connected?
Yes, I think it's up there. The last time I looked it was up there.
I didn't need to provide that link, I just operated based on the assumption it wasn't there because we couldn't find it, remember, Mr. Bayes couldn't find it. So it's been added at some point?
Yes, I got it from the auto version and submitted to you.
In order to format any questions, we just think so.
Annual financial report in twenty-two, twenty-three is the last one posted on that document list.
Uh, okay, it, it was there two days ago. So we'll get it up there.
Do you know where it was posted?
Well, their audit would have been first one two twenty-three.
So, yeah, it's there, so. I'll just email this to her, that way she have it. Uh, I guess it's off topic now, sorry.
So, um, so the motion is to authorize Mr. Burton to select the CPA. Um, it sounds like you're leading, leaning towards LaNoria?
Yes.
All right, so, um, so if we like to vote on this. Um, to authorize Mr. Burton to contact and, and agree that with.
I don't know, I keep wanting to say Ava LaNoria.
Her name is Veronica.
Well, it's like our, I said that our, our motion didn't.
Kind of give him the designation. A vote of.
Yeah, so I'm just, that's the clarification, I mean, the motion is, is vague to enter, to, you know, do it. And so we're just saying that, so I just want to make it clear that we're all agreeing.
I will amend for you, we select. Veronica LaNoria.
I second.
All right, so, would you have an amendment and thank you. To, um, to name.
The word.
Ms. LaNoria as CPA that we.
And I don't believe she's a CPA.
You just said the word, oh.
Why wouldn't she be, how could she run her own account?
CPA is just a, a private designation. She, she worked in, um, public account, definitely a public account, but this is means. You have a degree, it's a, okay, big service, but it doesn't mean she can be less qualified than somebody. Like when I didn't keep up CPA license because it's a thousand dollars a year if you're not doing it. So you don't have to be a CPA, but it's just a designation.
And when you look at, is she based in Austin or?
I can, I can speak to that a little bit, uh, uh, she, she's a public finance, uh, expert, so she's worked with cities before. I don't know her CPA status, but she's based in Corpus Christi. Um, and then the, uh, the other firm, uh, Peacock is based in Plano. And I, I don't know if, uh, Peacock's a CPA either, they're, they're, they're both public finance, um, professional companies.
And to remove CPA, that's a file.
Yeah.
I second.
Replace with what?
Nothing.
Nothing.
To select.
Still works.
An accountant. So amend to strike certified public accountant and add an accountant.
Right. And let me get a second to that, there's, okay. Second, so the, the amendment is to strike certified public and interns CPA. And to say select and accountant for the city of Wood Creek and to enter into a contract with said individuals. So that's, that's the amendment, so we'll start on the amendment, um, favor, please signify by saying aye, ready for him? Thank you, okay, the secondary amendment, um. Was to name the firm toward LaNoria. On favor, please signify by raising your hand. And the main motion is to authorize the city, uh, acting city manager to select an accountant. Namely, Ms. LaNoria and, um, enter into a contract with said. On favor, please signify by saying aye.
You'll probably move from the agenda. I'd like to ask if I can talk about something on the budget briefly on item five. Um, in speaking to Mr. Burton today about contract services, he noted that, um, we are. Uh, I'm sorry, I missed this earlier in my notes, but we are planning to have these interns work for the rest of the year. And he expressed some concern about, um, there being enough in the budget for those contract services in the future. But in trying to reference where that would be in our budget. Uh, I'm not seeing, like, am I missing any contract services here where? I, I, maybe that's just a note for another time.
Sometimes, sometimes it's, it's set of not, zero categories. So that could be why this, this, the services is, is in our chart.
Okay, I'll make a note that we might want to review and adjust that for the future. Because we, we're not really clear how to pay the interns or where from. And so we've got that account now, we've spent two thousand dollars out of it, we don't really know yet what it was on. Some, somebody coded to that line, but we were concerned about making sure we had allocated funds for them in the future. So just kind of a heads up, I guess more of an announcement, I didn't miss that today.
And then when I went, when I went in to look at, um, John Rawlings's, um, past statements. Um, and, and how it's coded, I mean, when he was a contractor, you know, it was coded to. Um, 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 what is it, salaries and wages.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, I guess that would be wages.
Well, I, going through all those, um, budgets, contract services was a very common.
Yeah, it makes, it makes sense.
It's a very good little catch up.
Mr. Bay, did you get that note?
Yes, I did.
That, okay, thank you.
All right, that is a regular, um, regular agenda, um. Item for future meeting, I will, I will tell you one, um, that. Not on our first meeting in September, but in our second meeting in September, we will have a public hearing. Um, on the replay across the road, um, I apologize for that, it was got, got slipped. Um, so anyway, we need to have a public hearing and a vote to, to deal with the request for a replay and tell it work. Um, also, um, good chance that we will start with that triangle. Um, public hearing for the, for having the triangle apart, correct?
Yeah, we need that too, and that's what we're enjoying with the ending.
Was that the name of the triangle?
Not make naming it a public part of the.
How long do I have to get an item in?
Monday.
Monday, okay.
Monday one o'clock.
If you're missing a document or something, Wednesday is our final cut off.
Oh, okay, so how much can I get to do there?
Yeah, we did, we, um, we, we sit down on, on Wednesday, um, so, so the way it works is. To clarify for everybody is, you know, we set a Monday one o'clock deadlines for, for council to have items in. Um, that gets us from, that gets us Monday afternoon and Tuesday, um, to, to get with those. Um, uh, city secretary puts it into agenda format, so it's like, okay, this is, this is what it's going to look like. Um, and, and here are the, the things, so then on Wednesday, usually it was in the morning, but sometimes it's a. Um, the, the, I can see the manager, remember them, and I sit down. Um, and go over what that agenda looks like and see if there's any issues with it. At that point, we still got, you know, really a couple of days, that's several days, so, you know, the, the absolute timeline. When it gets posted is like Sunday, based on the times of the future, four o'clock or six o'clock depending on the evening. But we try to get it posted and out to the, so that you and citizens can see the full agenda with all the package information. Um, by Friday and preferably by Thursday, um, so, so that's kind of the timeline. If something comes up and it's just like, nah, um, then just contact me.
Okay.
Um, you know, especially what she says, that I've got everything in the cover, I'm waiting for this packet information. As long as we get it, you know, as long as we know it's coming on Wednesday, you know, we'll put a placeholder in. Um, but if we don't have it by, like, you know, posting time, you know, we, we can always do packet information at the table. It does not, the packet, the packet doesn't need to be posted. Um, we do it because we think it's the right thing to do for transparency, but if there's an item that's not in the packet when it gets posted.
As long as your item doesn't reference the packet.
Yeah.
And the wording.
So, so anyway, that's, that's what we're trying to do is just to help us all, you know, get the, get the work done. Um, okay, so who, who, are you going to put something on the agenda?
Yeah, I don't know, I just want to bring up something.
Um, can it wait until?
Finish.
I mean, do you want it to be on the record?
Item four. I don't know if this goes in the old packet. This is a spreadsheet that shows the presentations that Pat Rawlings made to the city council. With all the changes and the eliminations that were made and that were approved by city council. So, do y'all have this?
It is in the packet.
Y'all need to look at it.
I did, I was citing errors and I.
Well, the, the errors, but it's also, it was approved by the council, Pat's presentation. This may be, have an error, I think there's like two, but. Y'all were informed about the things that were removed. It, it says right here, benches removed, bike racks removed, water fountain removed, see? That was in the presentation.
Uh, I gotta be honest, presentations as reports to council do not count when it comes to council approving of changes. So one of those notes that it's just the presentation, and so there was never a council approval vote. Does that make sense? So on the third column.
Well, I didn't know Sudan looked at the count, I mean, she just went back to the records. And so the city council approved this, everything that was made in this presentation.
And the second column is where you see a vote for approval, and that was the exception of the POSAC packet. That, um, was outdated, but that was never sent to POSAC either.
No, I know it was sent, yes, I'm not saying it was sent to POSAC, none of that. No, I know it was sent, yes, I'm not saying it was sent to POSAC, none of that has ever been sent to POSAC or the county. I'm just saying that these presentations notified council of changes. And they were approved, that's all, I'm just asking y'all to look at it between now and.
We will, and, and as I told you, we can, I mean, I'm, I'm.
I understand.
Really happy to work with you on it.
And this is a lot of work, this is a lot of information, but uh. It wasn't that you, it wasn't said. Even if you say the presentation is not part of the record, is that true?
Presentation is part of the record, but is the, is, if, if there was a, a registered vote. You know, somebody said, I moved jet, we approve the changes suggested by the chair, you know, all in favor, okay, as Pat did, okay. That is a, that is an official record, if, if a report is given.
Can I just tell you that it is just a report and there's no packet attached? So there's no official record of any of that, it's just a motion was made by him.
And can I, I, help, I'm so sorry, but. I, I was really okay with a brief comment about a previous agenda item, but we're really starting to get in discussion about this again. And anybody who was here for that agenda item has left, so they don't have noticed that it's going to be brought back up, so we should probably. Not continue down this path.
The vote, yes, that's a different meeting.
Okay, Charlie asked that. React, we can, please, we, you know.
I'm just.
We're, we're.
I'm, yes.
On breaking laws, um. Um, so other items for future meetings?
Yes, that, um, previous agenda item that I prop, that was, um, put to the side. Because of a, a legal, I was told that this, for, for the purposes of legal review regarding, um, squalling circle. And the, a reimbursement to some of the citizens that did some work on, on squalling circle. Um, that, that would be on the next agenda item.
We spoke to the attorney and, and I've had conversations with Mr. Torro about how to treat it.
I haven't been, I haven't been told about that yet. So perhaps I need to be um, roughed up to speed.
I'm on an email where you're copied and it's noted that it's going to legal.
Yeah, it, it, we got, we got a legal opinion that it, it really is an insurance claim that we're discussing. But, all right, nevermind.
We're really starting to discuss this, y'all.
I know, thank you, thank you for saying, I mean, I just always want, want to help.
I understand.
Okay, so anyway.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can, you can have a full discussion with him after the meeting if you want, so you can bring him up to speed, that's not a problem.
I'll bring it up. Other items?
Oh, I, yeah, I have a whole list, and I don't know how much of this you want to be in now, because I'm all the time. So really, I think all of it? Yeah. Okay, here we go. Um, I have constructed an item regarding Freeland Turf to address a series of. Engineering, um, scope of work and cost estimates so that we can. Uh, reflect and prioritize during the budget season about the amount of money we're allocating to some of these capital improvement projects. Those include things like pedestrian mobility, safety enhancement phase two, uh, capital improvements plan to address things like road maintenance and. One more thing, hold on, um. I lost my place, and also, uh, city minded drainage review, uh, because that's our big projects for them. So we need to know what they are proposing in regards to cost estimates and scope on those. The next.
We're going to go through the. Any objection? There'll be an episode.
Uh, the next item is we have been talking extensively with our chairs and vice chairs of various bodies. Reflecting on how better to condense volunteer efforts, reduce staff. Work and make city business more efficient, so there will be a series of proposals to changing the structures of our advisory boards and the, the, the quantity of them.
Question?
Um, I will look into the rainwater and bathroom projects already, I've been waiting all summer long for quotes to come in. We have now started to finally receive quotes for them, so I can't submit them to the packet. Additionally, the water, oh, sorry, that's. Why I'm. Uh, the water task force is wrapping up their work on their final products, we've had a, a little bit of a bump in progress for the last few meetings trying to use Zoom. Um, but we are nearing final document there. Uh, I'm hoping to have those in accordance with the rainwater collection projects on the second September meeting. It looks like we're going to lack a couple bits to make the first one, I'll find one day. Uh, but people are, they've affirmed that they are producing, we've got two already on that, um, so that's good. No, okay, uh, the next one is, um, we have, um, the Freeland Turf package out about the stop sign that. Uh, for Hollow and Augusta Drive, where currently our ordinance doesn't match that, so we'll be bringing forth a cleanup ordinance on that. This isn't something that I was planning to have the attorney consult on because it's not an ordinance that I have personally drafted, I've actually just used. Existing city stop and all we had to do was make a, a line adjustment for the stop sign. So this is not something that I would perceive needing to go through a formal review as these are existing ordinance for the cities written by previous attorneys and administrative, you know. The kind of professionals we claim we need on these candidates, so I just copied and pasted. Um. And, uh, we also have a, I've kind of altered this item and Mike and Charlie might have some feedback on this, but. We need an excess debt collection service provider. Um, I originally had it to go out for RFQ, but I believe based on kind of what we did with the accountant tonight. It'd actually be more, be more of like an authorizing Mr. Burton to secure that service, we have to have this service. So I'm not saying you can't vote no on it, but I'm just implying this is kind of one of those just like almost consent agenda items because without the excess debt collection service. We are, um, losing that money.
Oh, yours. Um, any, the others, other announcements? Um, everybody has a delivery.
Motion to adjourn.
Turn music is seven. Right, stay glass. You bring them around. Yeah. Okay, it's an actual. Sure.
Things are good, but they're not that good for you, no, and they won't get our back.
Spend money on it often.